It is now 4:03 on Wednesday, June the 9th. It's a meeting of the governing body. It is a hybrid meeting. We're here in the chambers. The public is zooming and attending virtually. It's the first time we've come back together in a year and at least three months. And a great deal of credit and appreciation to the team that brought us to this point where we could do this. It will be a little bit of a first-time experiment. So if things don't work perfectly, or if we can fix it to make it even better next time, please take notes and provide them. And have a little patience as we're starting a little bit late because we're still working through some of the technology that we're practicing. So it is a maiden voyage of a hybrid meeting of the governing body. With that, I will move from the call to order to our usual order of business. A pledge of allegiance will be led by Counselor Abeta. Salute to the New Mexico flag will be led by Counselor Vialcopler. And then an invocation from Councilwoman Villarreal, followed by remembrances that members of the governing body wish to provide. For the members of the governing body, please be a little patient with me. For the first time in about a year and a half, I don't have a screen with your hands going up technologically, so I may have to look to the right, look to the left, to see the order in which people want to be recognized. And or or you can knock on my Plexiglas if that if that works. So with that, let's please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
I'm going to read a passage by Don Cohis, a Mohican writer. "The Creator designed us to learn by trial and error. The path of life we walk is very wide. Everything on the path is sacred. What we do right is sacred, but our mistakes are also sacred. This is the Creator's way of teaching spiritual people. To criticize ourselves when we make mistakes is not the right way. To learn from our mistakes is the important way. The definition of a spiritual person is someone who makes thirty to fifty mistakes each day and talks to the Creator after each one to see what to do next next time. This is the way of the warrior." And before I would like to start with remembrances, Mr. Mayor, wanted to recognize that the city lost a great public servant a couple of weeks ago, Frank DeLucio. I didn't know him personally, but I wanted to recognize him. He was he's a retired he's retired from the city of Santa Fe and a former fire chief. Frank DeLucio was diagnosed with occupational-related cancer several years ago and immediately went to work for the firefighter cancer support network to prevent other firefighters from getting cancer. And he fought his own cancer valiantly. He was also a city manager after his time as fire chief, and he helped establish the fire science program at the Santa Fe Community College. And just wanted to wish, recognize him, and also send condolences to his family. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lindell.
My mother, Shirley Lindell, went on to her greater rewards a week ago today. She was 103. And what I would say about her is that my mother, Shirley Lindell, lived a life of honesty, integrity, commitment, determination, kindness, and humanity, all spiced up with an incredibly great sense of humor. I never saw Shirley Lindell do anything deceitful or malicious. Never saw her sacrifice her principles for power, access, or expedience. She lived by the principles she cherished: hard work, honesty, fair play, courage, loyalty, and patriotism. She was brilliant, absolutely hilarious, and a deeply loving woman. We're better off for her passing this way. Nothing, and I mean nothing, has ever made me happier than having Shirley Lindell as my mother. Thank you to everyone that's reached out to me in the last week. She had a terrific go. The stories that people have related to me about her, every one of them absolutely comical. And I'm deeply grateful that I was with her, holding her hand, when her spirit flew out of her body like a schoolboy flies out a school door, happy and joyous.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Vialcopler.
Thank you. I would like to extend condolences here to fellow Counselor Signe Lindell. And I'm very sorry you lost your mom, Shirley, and just wishing you all the best. I would also like to express condolences for the loss of Frank DeLucio. When I worked at the city, I worked with Frank. He rose through the ranks like all firefighters do. He was very well-respected. When I left the city, he was assistant chief. And he just was a remarkable firefighter. As Counselor Villarreal said, he knew fire science very well. But he moved about the administration very quietly and was just the kindest person and a very, very good, good man. And he knew his stuff. He really did. And when he became assistant chief, he he pretty much developed the whole budget because he knew so much. And his budgets were very, very less scrutinized than any other because he knew what he was doing. And even up to the last days, he was very active on Facebook, always had some very cool things to say, very different and great opinions. And I I know that the Brotherhood and the Fire Department is grieving now for his loss. And, you know, I wish condolences to his wife Janet and certainly to their family. And I have one more expression of condolences, and that is to the family of Tim Dabs. I worked with Tim Dabs at the Taxation and Revenue Department. He was in the Motor Transportation Division, and we worked together on getting the motor transportation field officers certified in carrying arms. Those are the people who stopped the truckers on the highways. At any rate, Tim had a wonderful personality. He was so funny, just one of those joys to work with, who made your work-life just feel so much better. Tim is also the brother-in-law of former Senator Ramon Mays. And so I wish condolences to those families. Thank you.
Thank you. Others who wish to be recognized? I would I would certainly extend my condolences to Counselor Lindell and to her family. And I can only say that we owe a lot to her mom because Counselor Lindell has a lot in common with the attribute she attributed to her mother, including some of the most pungent and wise sayings I've ever encountered. And I would encourage Counselor Lindell to write a book, Sayings From My Mom, because it would be a guaranteed bestseller. And I'll be your first customer, Counselor.
Mayor, let me just say that one of my mother's most famous sayings was to sit there very deadpan and look around and go, "Well, you plant corn, you get corn. And if that's true, things are going good for me."
Well, we are grateful to her, and we celebrate her life with you. I also want to add my condolences to the family, the DeLucio family. This level of service in our city is what makes Santa Fe so special, people who have served in many roles and over many years, and leave behind a legacy that we should all appreciate. And one one other individual who I'm missing already is Sandy Deitch. Sandy was a great part of our community and contributing to our community and always politically active, always willing to pitch in, and a great art collector and a patron of artists who needed help, Sandy was there. So we miss her as well. So let's take a minute and reflect on these individuals, as well as others who have suffered loss, and send them our thoughts and our prayers and our appreciation and our gratitude. Thank you, everybody. With that, if the clerk could please call the roll.
Yes, Counselor Abeta?
Here.
Counselor Cassett?
Here.
Counselor Garcia?
Present.
Counselor Lindell?
Here.
Counselor Rivera? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Rivera.
Counselor Rivera has been excused.
He's been excused today. I apologize for that. Counselor Merrill Worth?
Here.
Counselor Vialcopler?
Here.
Councilwoman Villarreal?
Present.
Mayor Weber?
Present.
You have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. Before we approve the agenda, I would propose we take, partly because of our technology experiment tonight, let's see if we can take the executive session, if it's acceptable to the governing body, and move it to the end of the meeting so we don't have a regular meeting with this new technology, a hiatus with an executive session and then a return. If we could just move it to the last item on the agenda as an amendment to the agenda, if that's acceptable, it might make our technology transfers easier. I see the city attorney's hand is up.
Members of the governing body, I would just ask that we also move the action item along with it. If we're moving the executive session, there's an action item following our session.
Let's let's move them both, if it's acceptable, both of those items to the end of the agenda so that we don't have a potential glitch in our technology that would leave our evening session potentially a problem. Is that is that if that's okay to everybody, I would ask somebody move to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion from Counselor Merrill Worth to approve the agenda as amended, and a second from Counselor Vialcopler. It's harder to hear in here. It was you, wasn't it, with the second? The Plexiglas and the distance, I'm Zoom accustomed at this point. Seconded by Counselor Vialcopler. Is there any discussion of the motion? If not, could the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Counselor Abeta?
Yes.
Counselor Cassett?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Merrill Worth?
Yes.
Counselor Vialcopler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Villarreal?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
Thank you. I will now ask, please be patient with me while I look around the room. Items to be taken off of the consent calendar. If you could raise your hand, I will then recognize you. Counselor Vialcopler and Counselor Garcia.
I would like to remove item D, as in dog.
Anything else, Counselor? That's that was the one? Okay. Counselor Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Vialcopler beat me to D as well.
Very good. Okay, so item D is taken from consent for discussion. If there's no no other items to be removed, could I get a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Cassett moved to approve it as amended, and Counselor Lindell seconded that. Is there discussion? Could the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Counselor Cassett?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera? I apologize, I'm still in hybrid mode. Counselor Merrill Worth?
Yes.
Counselor Vialcopler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Villarreal?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
Madam City Attorney, Counselor Counselwoman Villarreal just raised a very good question. We're coming back into session together where, because we were historically able to have voice votes since we were all here, we did that. We moved to everything being a roll call when we were in virtual meetings. Can we go back to voice votes now?
Mayor Weber, counselors, I think that's a good question. So part of the recommendation from the Attorney General's Office was primarily for the public to keep track. So to the extent that we think it could still help the public understand who's been voting for what without being to be able to be present, if we think that this satisfies that adequately, I think we could go back to voice votes for for those matters where we don't have a voice vote. Obviously, some some matters still do require a voice vote regardless. So that would be the consideration. The guidance didn't specifically contemplate hybrid meetings, so we don't have specific guidance about this setup. So I think just to be conservative and provide all protections possible, right now, we're starting with voice vote. The clerk and I did speak about it beforehand, and we thought it might just be most conservative in terms of following the guidance to do voice votes, still at least for this hybrid setup. But if the governing body thinks that we've achieved, I see myself like infinity times right now. I don't know what's going on. But if the mayor and city council believe that we still we have achieved the level of public ability to tell who's voting without it, that would be a choice we could make.
Maybe it may be specific to the kind of item it is as well, but a roll call versus a voice may be something we should practice. Thank you for raising it, though. Thank you. With that, we move to item eight, which is Thank you. Uh, with that, we move to item eight, which is uh, the approval of the minutes from the regular governing body meeting of May twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one. Are there amendments or changes to those minutes?
Mayor.
Counselor Garcia.
I'd like to request to postpone the approval of these minutes, just because as I was reviewing them, there were some comments that I want to make sure that were accurate in regards, in particular, that were made on my behalf. So I, I'd like to make a motion to postpone it to next meeting.
Uh, I don't think anybody would object to that. So there's a motion to postpone item eight A at the request of Counselor Garcia, so he can have more time to review the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Cassett has seconded it. Let's try a voice vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. That didn't seem to cause any problem. All right. Item number nine A. Uh, Madam Clerk, could you read us into item nine A?
Yes, Mayor. Item nine A is the COVID-nineteen update percent resolution twenty-twenty dash fifty-one. Our city manager, Jarela Penn Hill, is available as well as Kira Ochoa, our Community Health and Safety Director for this item.
Thank you. Uh, city manager, you want to introduce it?
You, uh, I'm going to turn it directly to uh, Director Ochoa for a brief update.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Um, our COVID report is a very glowing and positive report about how we're doing in New Mexico and Santa Fe County um, and in the city of Santa Fe. Um, we have in the city of Santa Fe, seventy-five-point-two percent of people have at least one vaccination. Um, and sixty-five-point-two percent have, are fully vaccinated. Um, we're right up there among um, the highest vaccinated counties in New Mexico. I will just give a shout out to McKinley County. McKinley County is at ninety-four percent, ninety-four-point-seven percent vaccinated. I just saw that today and thought that was just so wonderful. Let's all get there in Santa Fe as well. Um, it's not so surprised that our rates of COVID are falling dramatically as well. All counties, as you know, in, in New Mexico are currently turquoise and we really want to stay that way. The coordinating team, um, which is um, which we meet weekly with Department of Health, um, reports that we're really moving from the larger vaccination events to the smaller vaccination events. Um, Department of Health is going to be moving from Desert Sage Academy back to their Lutrotto Public Health Office for um, vaccinations um, at the end of June. We are doing another event this Saturday at the Santa Fe South Side Library with Department of Health, and they'll be doing another at Community College. We'll have all of these events on our website, so the public can see where to go. Um, C- Christus is offering walk-in um, vaccinations, Johnson and Johnson at their pharmacy, La Familia, Fridays at their clinic for anybody who wants them. We are very proud to say that we have a new mobile health unit at the city, which is continuing to assist with in-home vaccinations for the homebound. And um, there was a lot of discussion today. I mean, people may be curious about our upcoming markets, our international folk art market, or Spanish market, and our Indian market. Um, the Department of Health is working closely with Christus on these events to ensure that testing is occurring um, for folks who are coming in, as well as vaccinations being available for these events to make them very safe. Um, and with that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. Are there questions for Director Ochoa about our current status with COVID response? Very good. Thank you, Director. Uh, with that, uh, Madam Clerk, we move to ten D, as in David, which was removed from the consent calendar. If you could introduce that.
Yes, Mayor. Item uh, ten D is consideration of a resolution establishing an operation plan for bicentennial pool for the twenty-twenty-one season. Regina Wheeler, our Public Works Department Director, is available for this item, along with Gino Rinaldi, our Acting Recreation Division Director.
Uh, Counselor V. Hill Coppler, you want to, uh, you, you pulled this along with Counselor Garcia. Would you like to have the floor?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want, I wanted to pull it off the agenda because I think we need to have a discussion about it, and I'm not sure what approving it on consent would accomplish, because we do have some amendments that I think um, address the item in various ways. So um, first of all, though, uh, before I ask the other amendment uh, councillors to maybe go over what they believe are the important points of the amendments, I, I believe that um, we shouldn't be wasting the water that we're wasting. Um, I, you know, we are in a drought and I know that there's been some Band-Aids, uh, I, I wouldn't say Band-Aids. I guess there's been some repairs on uh, going on with this pool. But uh, it's not, it, from what I understand, it's not going to hold for very long. And so we will always, uh, until we do something different, have uh, some of the issues we have with the pool, uh, you know, there's been much said about all of this. So I won't uh, belabor those points, but it's, I think, uh, for this particular season, it might uh, be judicious of us to really get into some of these amendments, because uh, you know, we could go either way. But the, the long-term picture is do we want an outdoor pool? And, and I think the answer is probably yes. And my questions would be, uh, let's discuss that in the future and where it would go and how much it would cost. It's probably time we think about the assessment of this particular pool and whether it's outlived its usefulness. My opinion is that it has, and it's gradually falling apart. And then I'm not sure that the money that we spent repairing, we spend repairing this pool will serve us right in terms of a cost benefit. Maybe the money could be better spent in the future on um, deciding the, the issues I brought up earlier. Do we want a new pool? Where should it be and how much does it cost? So with that, I'll ask, um, well, you certainly will take over, but I would, I'm very curious to see uh, the amenders, Garcia and Vialle, uh, what, what their items are about. I noticed those are new. And of course, Mayor, you have one as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Garcia, you also wanted to take this off of consent. Uh, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I don't know if we have to move forward with the motion, but I'm open to discussing the amendment with Councilwoman V. Ariel in regards to what our reasoning behind our amendment. Um, so with that being said, oh, I think just to keep us in alignment with what our practice has been in the past, I'll make a motion to approve this item with uh, mine and Councilwoman V. Ariel's amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Point, point of order, and I think the city attorney is raising her hands.
Okay. Uh, city attorney?
Mayor Weber, councilors, I think we're, we're trying to make just the motion for the main motion initially and then do amendments after.
Okay.
Okay, so, so then I'll uh, rescind my motion and make a motion to approve. And then uh, we, I can speak about the amendment. Is that in order?
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion to approve and a se- uh, from Counselor Garcia and a second from Counselor Merriworth. And now we can discuss the motion as well as options for amendment uh, to it.
So, point of clarification, I think if Counselor Garcia wanted to now move the amendment, he could. And then we could center the conversation on that, unless Counselor Garcia would like to just have a general discussion about the pool and this particular resolution before he makes his amendment. But now his amendment would be uh, in order.
Right. Well, I don't want to limit discussion. I think it's fair for everybody to have opportunity and not speak to solely the amendments. I think with that, I'll defer to any of my colleagues that want to speak on the matter, and then I'll ask to speak again to introduce the amendment.
Great, thank you. Counselor Lindell?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Ms. Wheeler, I, I had a question for you. Do we have any kind of a, a estimate of uh, estimate and timeframe to open the bicentennial pool for the summer twenty-one session?
Uh, thank you for the question, Counselor Lindell, Mayor, um, governing body. Um, I, if I could get a clarification, Counselor Lindell, are you saying could the pool be open for the summer season in any way, shape, or form?
Correct.
Uh, we believe that uh, the pool could be opened at this time uh, safely for all the patrons and the employees. Um, and it would be opened in a condition where it was leaking. Um, we believe the maximum leakage would be about a hundred-and-thirty-thousand gallons a month, which is what it was leaking when it was closed last season. Um, as Counselor V. Hill Coppler mentioned, some repairs have been done that are estimated to um, have saved us about twenty percent of that leakage, although that has not been measured. The pool has not been refilled yet. So yes, it, the pool could be brought into operational um, status for the summer season with leaking occurring. And I don't know if uh, Director Ochoa would like to add to that.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, Counselor Lindell. Uh, in terms of staffing, we could open the pool, but we would have to close one of the other pools currently open, either G-triple-C, Salvatore Paris, or Fort Marcy.
Um, do we have an estimate? Do we have further repairs that need to be done in order to open?
Um, governing body and um, Counselor Lindell, uh, no, we would not execute any further repairs before opening this summer.
Okay, I'll yield the floor. Um, actually, I, I'll say one more thing. Um, so we're talking about a hundred-and-thirty-thousand gallons a month. Let's try to keep it in perspective of that we have, um, I'm not sure, m- maybe Ms. Wheeler, you can refresh my memory. Um, how much water uh, do we put on um, on a daily basis? How much water goes on uh, the two golf courses that we supply water for?
Um, thank you, Counselor Lindell. I think that is a great context to put the question inside of. I think the um, golf courses use approximately a million gallons a day.
Okay, so a million gallons a day, and we're talking about a hundred-and-thirty-thousand gallons in a month. Um, so I didn't, I, I appreciate the context to that. And sometimes, uh, and that's two golf courses, so it's two million gallons a day. And sometimes it's a lot more than that. So I, I wanted to have some context on how much water we're actually talking about here on on a monthly basis as compared to a daily basis.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, other, yes, Counselor V. Hill Coppler, and please, if you have a, if you want to get into the speaking line, just uh, give me advance notice. I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. I, I appreciate Counselor Lindell's question, but we don't put treated wastewater in our swimming pools. So that's the kind of water we use on the golf course. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Councilwoman V. Ariel, you knocked on my Plexiglas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we, we had talked about this at length, the quality of life and um, committee, and I think what I think was the, the piece that was important to me is the staffing element. And having to close another pool, um, I think would be challenging for us, um, considering that we've been waiting for Salvatore Pettis to open. And then also, um, Henoveva, that's just, that wouldn't be, I don't think that would make any sense. Um, I think what there are resol- or excuse me, our amendment was trying to do is trying to understand the, the issue, because we know that there have been improvements and the pumping station and things in that area are actually very functional and, and we want to make sure that that continues. But the actual structure, I, what I had said in Quality of Life is that we, we don't really know what we have on our hands until we start digging. And so I would err on the side of caution to just decide that this season, although it's very disappointing for a lot of people, that we would not have bicentennial open. Um, and just make sure that we are taking the right path and finding, doing fact-finding, so we know what's, what's out there. So I think that that's important. Um, with the resolution in particular, sorry, I keep saying resolution, amendment, we're really wanting to um, state that that full assessment will be needed. Um, and once that is completed by staff, that we would get a presentation and discuss it, and then look at potential options for next steps. So I, that's why I was supported, I'm supportive of that, that um, action and I, yeah, I just, I feel like it's a hard decision to make and something's got to give, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Cassett, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, I wanted to circle back. I know part of the discussion we had at Quality of Life of what opportunities we have for not just lap swimming, but for uh, children's swimming. Uh, my understanding is that we will not be able to open up the, what is it called? The leisure pool, G-triple-C, the kid, the kids' zone. Um, but is there, I know they do swim lessons at Fort Marcy. Is there a top pool that is open or available there that we'll be able to be looking at for the summer for kids to swim?
Who knows the answer to that? I see.
Mr. Mayor?
Gino is, I can't, you're in the, you're in the shadows, my friend. Is that Gino?
Sir, sorry. Let's see if I can find a light.
Mr., there you go. There you go. Mr. Rinaldi, good. You have the floor, sir.
Mayor, uh, Counselor, um, the uh, top pool at the uh, Fort Marcy, we're, we're, we're getting that one open. It's a small pool and it can handle a few kids, uh, sort of a but it's what we have at this point. So that's what we're doing.
Thank you, Gino. So we are working on getting that open, and I'm assuming that it'll be similar uh, using a reservation basis, so that people can preserve time to utilize that pool?
Mayor, Counselor, yes.
Okay. And then do we know how many people would be, how many families essentially would be able to fit in that pool?
Mayor, Counselor, it's a very small pool, so I would say uh, probably one or two, just depending on if it's same-family members, you know, maybe you can take a couple of, but it's a, it's a, probably a I'm going to guess, uh, it's, it's probably about a an, an eight-by-eight size pool, about two or three feet deep. So it's not a big pool.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much for that information. Um, and as I had mentioned in Quality of Life, and I will just mention it again, that um, I am in support of keeping bicentennial closed. I do think that, especially in a drought year, allowing that much water leakage to occur is it's not environmentally responsible of us. Um, and it has been a very a tough year. Everybody, I know everybody's out for some more recreation and would like to get outside. And I'm hoping that we can be creative in how we might be able to help people find other opportunities for recreation, whether it is partnering with um, the private pools, whether it is looking at some other opportunities that we might be able to provide within our parks. Um, our kids, our kids need things to do this summer. Um, we're all coming out of a really hard year. It was really hard for children, really hard for families. Uh, so I definitely want to make sure that even, even though I do support keeping bicentennial closed, uh, that we are looking for some other creative opportunities that might be able to take the place of the time uh, that our families would have been spending there. So thank you very much. I appreciate the information.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Merriworth and then Counselor V. Hill Coppler.
Thank you, Ma- thank you, Mayor. Um, getting used to this microphone. It's, I'm either way too loud or way too soft. It's like the Three Bears, Goldilocks. Um, I just want to add my voice um, to the supporting closing the pool. Um, because I think I want to emphasize that um, we should lead by example in terms of how we uh, handle our water usage and uh, since we can't fix it um, temporarily to not leak, and since it has, will require um, quite a bit of work, we're not going to be able to fix the leak in this, in time for it to be open for this season. So again, um, from a, a water policy perspective, I think we should lead by example in terms of our water use. a water policy perspective, I think we should lead by example in terms of our water use. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor V. Hill Coppler.
Thank you. I have a question for Mr. Rinaldi. Uh, at the Henoviva Chavez Center, there's the, that slide area, the slide, the slide, water slide and and all of that for children, and then there's a, it it gradually goes into a little waiting pool. Is that open or is that still closed?
Counselor, uh, or Mr. Mayor, Counselor, uh, the leisure pool
Oh.
is is being, needs to be repaired, needs to be replastered. And unfortunately, uh, it's not going to be scheduled and uh, to to get uh, that done until this fall or later in the season.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to follow up on a point made by Counselor Cassett, and perhaps either Director Wheeler or uh, Achoa can shed some light on this. Uh, I I have, have we reached out to any other outdoor pool or indoor pool providers to see if there's a relationship that we could strike uh, with them that would allow city residents to take advantage of of those facilities if the bicentennial pool is not uh, available this summer? Uh, are there other kind of bilateral relationships, partnerships uh, that we could strike that would speak to Counselor Cassett's point about more options for more families and in particular, uh, kids who are looking to learn to swim or get swimming time in uh, in Santa Fe?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have spoken to the community college, um, which is only offering lap swimming, so that's not uh, as much for children. They have a lot of capacity and they encourage us to direct folks to them who are not able to get their needs that, um, of course, that is an indoor pool. Um, and then we've begun some conversations with um, Solana Pool and others, um, Gino, you may have more information on that. Um, to see if we can either create formal arrangements or at least informate, you know, get information out to the community around other opportunities for children. Um, I, I will say that there are a number of families that want their kids to swim, and there are a number of families that don't want their kids to swim yet. So, um, we'll, we're gauging the need as well as we go.
Gino, did you have any uh, additional information about options that we could explore that are kind of non, non-traditional ways to expand our potential for meeting demand or ways to provide uh, information for families who want more swimming choices?
Mayor, Counselor, uh, basically what what Tara had had uh, said, uh, some of the conversation has been centering about, like, where are the lifeguards? Where have all the lifeguards gone? Uh, long time swimming. But uh, we're we're trying to uh, to generate that conversation also, uh, we're we're looking at, at trying to, I guess, for instance, with the youth program, we want to do get more of the 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 youth into the pool, so we're trying to coordinate, trying to get them into the pools. And uh, that would mean coordinating, uh, you know, the timeframes. So I I think that's, that's coming along well. Uh, we're also trying to look at uh, uh, reinstituting uh, the sw- swim, swim lessons for for youth. And again, that would be another opportunity. And as we began to hire um, more folks, uh, I mean, the lifeguards, as everyone knows, has been one of the issues. We've brought on three uh, new new guards, and uh, we're working on uh, hosting several uh, right now. And hopefully, we can, we can get kids to, to, to apply and we can pick them up. So, uh, you know, I I would say it it, some of those other options or other opportunities are optimistic. Uh, I I, and and hopefully we can get this stuff, you know, sooner than better, but, or sooner than than later. Uh, but, but that's, that's what I would have to say.
Thank you. Other uh, comments to the general proposition of the resolution as proposed? No? I think uh, Counselor Garcia, you wanted the floor back to move your uh, amendment.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I would like to move forward the amendment proposed by uh, myself and Councilwoman Viall. Um, I don't know if you want me to read it, but it's in the packet, and I can go through it on page three, line twenty-five, after shall, strike the remainder of the sentence and insert, and loo thereof, keep by, keep the bicentennial pool closed for the twenty twenty-one, closed for twen- should say twenty twenty-one. And once a full assessment of the pool is completed, provide a presentation to the governing body to discuss the assessment and potential options for next steps.
Um, you wanted to have it say, the the amendment that I had offered said for the twenty twenty-one summer season, did you want that language in your amendment?
Uh, sure, or just closed for twenty twenty-one, because I don't anticipate us opening it at any point through twenty twenty-one.
Okay, so just strike the
uh, strike the word the before twenty twenty-one.
Very good. So there's a motion to uh, adopt that amendment. Is there a second? Counselor V. Hill Coppler has seconded it. Uh, is there a discussion of this particular amendment?
Well, I'd just like to speak on why we propose this. And I'll let my co-sponsor speak as well if she would like. Um, I believe just because there's not been a appropriate assessment conducted, or at least one where the assessor is willing to put their name behind the assessment, and that way we have a full idea of what needs to be done to the pool, should we want to move forward to keep this particular pool open, and how much it would cost. I think that's the critical point here is what needs to be done and and how much it would cost the city. Um, Counselwoman uh, V. Hill Coppler brought up the point of, well, if it costs so much, how much would a new co- pool cost to be constructed? And I think those are things we really need to assess as we're moving forward with this particular pool. Um, it it's, I think we can all agree, it's heartbreaking to not have the pool, this particular pool open this summer. This is uh, an iconic pool for the city. Um, I I know for one, my daughter was looking forward to going to swim in here. Uh, she learned to swim last summer at the lake because the pool was not open. So now she was ready to go with her friends to the outdoor pool and show off her new, her swimming, but it's one of those, we don't know if it's safe, we don't want to waste water. I think it's one of those, it's in the best interest of the city to keep it closed, figure out what the next steps are, and and that way the community as well can can weigh in once we get that assessment. Maybe the community might say, sure, at all costs, repair it, open it up. Um, but I think that's the critical part. We need to figure out what's going on with this pool. Um, with that, no other comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Viall?
Oh, I have nothing to add. I think that my colleague covered it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Counselor Lindell?
Thank you, Mayor. This is such a tough vote. Um, we don't have a pool in this city for kids to splash around in this summer. I I just, that is so painful a vote for me to support. It's summertime, kids are supposed to be able to be in a pool, splashing around and squirting each other. Um, I under- you know, Counselor Romero-Worth uh, made a very good point that we have to set the example, but really, really frustrated with this, that um, we didn't have a much earlier assessment, a much earlier fix. I know that we went from um, an earlier director that's no longer here, this never got in the works early enough. And um, we can do better than this. I know we can. And um, I mean, I worked with Regina on this weeks ago. We met over at the pool. I've been over there numerous times, and um, current staff has worked like crazy trying to make this happen. And just a very painful vote for me to vote to not open our one outdoor pool. I mean, that's, that's summertime for kids. Um, but also understand, I mean, in proportion a hundred and thirty thousand gallons, um, we leak way more than that in um, irrigation in numerous places in this city. Um, I just, um, I I I find this a terribly painful vote to make, so that's what I needed to say, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Viall?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just had a quick question from staff. When the idea to open the pool even with the link, sorry, the leak, um, would that, was that going to include the kiddie portion of the pool, or was it, were, was it just the lane portion?
I think it's the whole pool facility. Is that right?
Yes. That's right. Um, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Viall, that would be correct. We would have looked at opening the entire thing, but then again, we, you know, this, these conversations began in early January. And um, at that time, we were also subject to governor's orders around what we could do with groups and um, and children gathering, children who are unvaccinated gathering was was still at that time, you know, something we'd have been subject to, but obviously not right now, so. I hope that answers the question.
Yes, thank you.
Um, I'd just add a couple thoughts. Uh, if you look at the memo that accompanies this, it starts out by pointing out that the pool is forty-five years old and has received no major renovations since it was built. So this uh, situation of um, leaks affecting its environmental sustainability is a longstanding problem that was left uh, unattended to for years and years. And now we are facing the requirement, as Counselor Lindell says, to make a choice between being sustainable or trying to keep this pool open for one more year with Band-Aids on it uh, and closing a different pool in order to provide the staffing level. Uh, it's a, it's a uh, very hard trade-off to make. Uh, it also points out in the cover memo, if folks who are watching and listening didn't uh, read this packet material, uh, our team looked at it very rapidly and effectively and found that, as Director Wheeler said, twenty percent, can be twenty percent savings potentially if we work right now, but we're still talking about a hundred thousand plus uh, leakage per day or per uh, per month, so it's non-trivial. Um, and as uh, Gino pointed out, the the level of staffing, it's not only a city of Santa Fe issue, there's a national shortage of lifeguards. There was a national newspaper story last week as summer begins across the country that lifeguards are in short supply in every community in in the United States. So we're making uh, trade-off choices, and uh, some, when you make a trade-off choice, there's no, there's no good answer, there's only an answer that makes the most sense perhaps, and we are in a, in a drought period. It's severe, it's ongoing. We're asking people to conserve water consistently, to get, to download the Eye on Water app uh, and track their own leaks in their own homes. Uh, and at the same time, we are committed, as Gino said, to doing outreach to any other facility we can find for a an additional resource that would augment what we have within our own capacity to provide for summer fun and fun, summer swimming for our families and and lap swimmers. So it's, it is a uh, a hard, a hard choice, but I think at the end of the day, uh, we know that any repair we would make would not really fix the problem. We'd still be doing the kind of assessment and evaluation that this amendment asks for. The over, the uh, immediate evaluation that was done, we found contractors who, as Counselor Garcia suggested, would not do the work with a guarantee that it would solve the problem. It would only temporarily patch what is not one leak, but a series of many different leaks. Uh, so it's um, it's not uh, an easy choice in the sense that we want our kids and families to come out of COVID with the opportunity to have fun in the sun. Uh, and yet, we really do need to be mindful of the overarching sustainability and water use issue that we're confronting across the community. Uh, any other comments before we go to a vote on the amendment? Could the clerk please call the roll on the uh, on the uh, motion? The motion which is the amendment?
Correct. Uh, Counselor Romero-Worth?
Yes.
Counselor V. Hill Coppler?
Yes.
Councilwoman?
I think you said Councilwoman Viall, and I say yes.
Perfect, thank you. Counselor Bata?
Yes.
Counselor Cassett?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
Most reluctant, yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
So that has adopted the amendment as proposed by Counselors Garcia and Viall. Now we're ready to uh, consider the uh, main uh, motion as amended. Is there any discussion? No. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Romero-Worth?
Yes.
Counselor V. Hill Coppler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Viall?
Yes.
Counselor Bata?
Yes.
Counselor Cassett?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
Thank you. Uh, could you take us to the next item then, please, Madam Clerk?
Yes, the next item is item eleven A, request for approval of a state capital outline grant agreement for a supportive housing facility project. It's twenty dash E two seven four five in the amount of eight hundred and forty-four thousand four hundred and seventy dollars to plan, design, construct, and renovate a facility for homeless and below-market renters, including housing and services in Santa Fe. David Chapman, our grants administrator, is available for this item. I also want to note that the second request in this item is request for approval of a budget adjustment resolution in the amount of eight hundred and forty-four thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. I believe Alexandra Ladd is also available uh, for this item.
Move to approve. Second?
There's a motion uh, to approve the item. Are we doing A, one together? Is it all one uh, motion, or are we dealing with separate items here? Is this uh, city attorney there to give us some free advice? It's item A and A one. Do we need to take them independently?
Mayor Weber, uh, the clerk introduced both of them at this point, so I understand the motion to be for both of them. The council could do them separately if it wished to do so.
Or together?
Or to, yes. At this point, I believe the motion would be for them together because they were, they were both introduced and one was a, a sub
Very good.
Decision of the other.
There's a motion to approve and a second from Counselor Cassett. Uh, discussion or questions for Mr. Chapman or uh, Director Ladd? Counselor Garcia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I I don't know if folks had an opportunity to uh, view the quality of life meeting that happened on Wednesday. Um, or no, it's Public Works. I'm, I apologize. It's, it's been a long week. Um, there, there was discussion when we began to talk about the matter in regards to these resources going to a particular entity off the bat, and this is an RFP process. And so my question is, did we disqualify Santa Fe Suites by stating our original intention of this, the resources are going to be directed to Santa Fe Suites when uh, we don't have that authority, given that it is an RFP process?
Uh, who are you directing that to?
I guess Mr. Chapman, or we don't have anybody from procurement on board, so I just want to make sure we're not breaking any rules by by out of the gate before the RFP even opened saying, these resources are going to this entity- before the RFP even opened saying, these resources are going to this entity. And that, that to me, I, I want to make sure we're, we're not breaking any rules, laws, et cetera.
Madam City Attorney, your hand is up. Can you address the legal issue here?
Mayor Weber, Counselor Garcia, my understanding is this agreement is accepting the funds from the Department of Finance and Administration. Later, there will be a procurement for construction services, is my understanding. And those will go to a private contractor pursuant to the procurement code.
So from the way it was explained to us that Santa Fe Suites would have to apply for the resources. And I guess, Mr. Chapman, am I correct in that being communicated to us on Monday? That the Santa Fe Suites would be the entity they would have to apply to receive the resources?
Yes, they would have to apply for it, yes.
Okay, so that to me, then, how can Santa, how can we say we're, it's going directly to Santa Fe Suites, but it's an RFP process? I'm trying to figure out how that works and how we're not tripping over ourselves here.
Well, I think we have to keep in mind, at this point, we're trying to just move the agreement between the City of Santa Fe and the state to be able to receive that funding. And then there is going to be, you know, procurement process following that to make sure that we are doing everything legally. And I, I don't see, in my experience, a conflict of interest because Santa Fe Suites has brought in, because they have essentially provided the, essentially the history and the background for this appropriation.
So I'm putting myself in the perspective of any other potential applicant that can be, whether it's local or, from my understanding, it doesn't even have to be local. Anybody that can demonstrate they can meet the needs of the, whatever is outlined in the RFP. And if I am somebody that is interested, but I know that the city has already stated that the resources are going, or they're earmarked, so to speak, for an organization, I would feel that, that there's a competitive advantage already given from the get-go. And that's, that's my concern. And that, that's where my question arises. Did we disqualify them by giving them this competitive advantage by already stating we want the resources to go to this entity? And that, that's where, I guess, the base, basis of my question is, in regards to procurement law, where, where do we stand with this? Because we've already expressed where we want the resources to go prior to the RFP even going live. And I, I'm at a loss for, I want to make sure we're, we're providing a fair and transparent process for anybody. I, I understand we want to provide great opportunity to our residents here in Santa Fe. And this, this, don't get me wrong, this money will go to great use. But I want to make sure that we're, we're doing it in a manner that is also fair to, to anybody that can provide the resources as indicated through what will be the upcoming RFP.
I think the city attorney has her hand up again to address the question that you're raising about RFP and pre-qualifications and the grant acceptance.
And Mayor Weber, Counselors, Director Ladd, do you want, I saw Director Ladd raised her hand. Do you want to speak first or do you want me to speak?
Why don't you speak first and then I will?
Okay. So I, I think there might, what might be the confusion, and I didn't get a chance to talk to David today, but I did speak with Director Ladd, so I believe I understand what we're planning to do, which is that the, the Santa Fe Suites will likely benefit from this project, but they will not be actually using the funds or receiving the funds, is my understanding. A private entity that would win a procurement and go through, or, or be on a state price agreement or other valid procurement method would be engaged in the services to accomplish these improvements. So that would be the procurement. And then I understand the property itself would be improved, which is the intent of the legislation, and that's fine under anti-donation because this would be for the care and maintenance of indigent persons, which is one of the exceptions to that protection. So, so in terms of Santa Fe Suites benefiting, that's not the procurement issue. That's more of an anti-donation concern, which I think has been solved. But I do think there's kind of two different levels here. One is the procurement of the services, which will have to go through the procurement code, whichever method is appropriate. And then the other is the benefit to Santa Fe Suites.
Director Ladd, did you want to add to that?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, Counselor Garcia, I think we got a little, it's a little bit, capital outlay funds are generally not used this way. And so that's why we've sort of had to kind of figure out, to your point, how do you dedicate the funds to a project for which the funds were lobbied and secured on the state level, but ensure that you are following all of the procurement processes? Because there will be a procurement and it will be focused on the actual construction services to provide the work.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly because Mr. Chapman stated that Santa Fe Suites would be applying for the resources. But now what I'm being told is we would hold an RFP for construction services. Am I understanding that correctly?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Garcia, that is my understanding of how the capital outlay funds work. But generally, we're using them for a road or a public facility that the city owns. You know, this, this project came out of the nonprofit sector because the funds were secured through that kind of lobbying process. So I believe we were, we had not talked through the process because we were focused on, the decision in front of you tonight is, will the city enter into an agreement with the state to accept the funds? And if so, will the city approve the budget adjustment to move the funds into the budget? So that's kind of, we went into the meeting on Monday, maybe not quite understanding the process because I think David can speak to how unique this situation is. Most of the capital outlay funds that he handles don't, don't work this way. And I think Director Wheeler also has a comment, it looks like.
We have a full slate of hands. We've got Director Wheeler and the city attorney are waiting their turns. Do you want to go first, Director Wheeler?
Thank you very much, Mayor, Counselors. Actually, it's not unheard of for capital outlay funds to be routed this way. A good example of this would be Krista St. Vincent's behavioral health center receives funds directly from the legislature. We have other types of nonprofit operations that do serve these types of people that are, so that they are exempt from procurement. So the, the state is allowed to provide funds to these types of services into the community because they are exempt from the procurement code. So we, it is not completely unusual for us to get funds that are directed towards a nonprofit that provides these kinds of services that are exempt. But like, as city attorney said and as Director Ladd has said and David, that we would have to use proper procurement for the services themselves. And in this case, it is the construction services. So that, if that, if that's helpful. It's, so the only types of organizations, it has to be certain types of organizations that give services to certain populations or certain types of services that are exempt from the procurement code so that it is not anti-donation for the state to provide the money directly. And that's the case with these particular funds.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So thank you for the clarification, Ms. Wheeler. I just, and I know that we're getting into the weeds, so to speak, but.
Mayor Weber, Counselor Garcia, I would like to make a clarification on that point, on the prior point. And the exemption is related to the anti-donation clause. The state's not looking at procurement when they make the allocation. And then just the other, there was one other element. But that's the, yeah, so it's, it's the exemption to the anti-donation clause that allows for the appropriation. There might have been something else, but that's the main thing I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to you, Counselor Garcia.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. As I was stating earlier, I know this is getting into the weeds, but I didn't anticipate an RFP coming before. So I wanted to make sure that our, we were in alignment if we approved these resources because from the information that was told to us on Monday, it seemed like if we were going to hold an RFP process to award the 850-some thousand dollars to a recipient that would be eligible to plan, design, construct, and renovate a facility for homeless and below-market renters, including. In Santa Fe County. That is what the appropriation is given to us for. It's not identifying a particular recipient. I know that there was discussions with Santa Fe Suites potentially being the recipient of this. But I just wanted to make sure that we were in the clear as we awarded this and as the next steps that were out of the control of the governing body, so to speak, we were in, working in alignment with our procurement process. Given the information that was further disclosed tonight, it makes the picture a little clearer than what was kind of discussed on Monday. With that, no other questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments about the item before, yes, Counselor Viho Copley?
Thank you. I wanted to, I guess I have one more weed to pick. And that is that, that the language does say to plan, design, construct, and renovate. It doesn't say or renovate. So if somewhat, maybe Alexandra could give, give some clarification. I can't remember in Public Works. Did you say that they were adding on to Santa Fe Suites? Or, or tell me exactly what, what you, what you discussed in Public Works was going to be done with these funds?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Viho Copley, the, the funds, the, the language of the appropriation, at the time that the funds were requested from the legislature, we didn't have site control or the, the organizations did not have site control of Santa Fe Suites. So I think that's part of the confusion is that the funds were requested for this project, but the project wasn't named. So the language in it was kept broader, more expansive so that the funds could be used if, 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 if the plan had to change at some point along the line, along the line. The intent of the current owners of Santa Fe Suites is that the, some of the common spaces need reconfiguring to work as a supportive housing community. The, in a motel situation, the lobby has a desk and sort of an open area. And there, I believe, I've actually never been inside the property, but I believe there's a breakfast room. So these spaces would need to be reconfigured to create case management spaces, maybe classrooms, other specific, to meet specific programming needs for the property. And there's also just a little bit of deferred maintenance because it's not brand new. So pavement needs to be fixed, certain systems have to be upgraded, that kind of thing.
Okay, and then the other question I have is, are, to your knowledge, is there anybody else, any other entity or organization that could qualify for these funds? In Santa Fe?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Viho Copley, at this point in time, we do not have another permanent supportive housing project coming online. We have a couple of potential projects, but they are several months away from being at a point to be able to use funds to, to make any kind of improvement or construction.
And could you tell me again why or why not Interfaith Shelter, known as Pete's Place, could not qualify for these funds?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Viho Copley, Interfaith is not a permanent supportive housing community. Interfaith is an emergency shelter. And those are very different entities. And these funds are intended for permanent supportive housing that also provides below-market rental options.
So, but I don't see that language requirement in here, that it has to be a permanent housing.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Viho Copley, I will defer that to David Chapman, who is much more familiar with the language in the appropriation.
As I understand, Mr. Mayor and Counselors, as I understand what has been said here is the question is, does the long-term residency preclude Pete's Pets or? And I don't, I don't, I don't, that's more of a legal, I think, would require more of a legal opinion than, than, than mine.
I can, I can, if you read the title, a supportive housing facility, that if you read then, for homeless and below-market renters. The Interfaith Shelter is not a supportive housing facility. It is a, very much a shelter. And it is, there are no below-market renters who are using that facility on a, on a supportive housing basis. So if you're reading the title without, I, I cannot tell you. I was present when the allocation was worked through at the legislature, but it seems it was very much, and not in an, any unusual way. This happens quite a bit with these capital outlay grants. There was very much a program in mind to facilitate, to attempt to promote and assist this specific kind of a supportive housing facility. Interfaith Shelter is, provides a very important service to the community, but it's a different service.
Thank you, Mayor. I, the title, what I'm referring to is the language, apparently, if this is correct, because we didn't have that at Public Works either. And I'm looking at the paragraph right above procurement method. And so it, this paragraph, to me, assumes to quote the legislation. And so that's what I'm looking at. And I don't see supportive, I don't see what you said here. So if, and, and it was, I was led to believe in Public Works that this is the language from the appropriation. I'm not trying to, to raise, you know, just random issues here, but I'm wanting to make sure that those who have an opportunity in Santa Fe that have something to do with homelessness, below-market renters or housing and services, services is also written here, which presumes, to quote the legislation, that anybody who has opportunity to apply for these funds has a neutral opportunity and basis of treatment, treatment in terms of how they're dealt with by the city in a process that is free of pre-selection of any kind, that they can apply and not be denied right out. So that's what I'm asking. It is still, this water is still a bit muddy.
Mayor, Counselor Viho Copley, if I might, the language that is in the caption is on page one of 14 of the agreement with DFA. Under Article One, it says, $835,000 to plan, design, construct, and renovate a facility for homeless and below-market renters, including housing services in Santa Fe, in Santa Fe County. So that language is in the agreement.
And it's in the memo?
It's correct. And so it does say, and, and as I said before, it is not uncommon for these nonprofit organizations to successfully achieve an appropriation through the legislature for a specific property, for a specific project that, as city attorney said, is exempt from anti-donation.
Mayor? When you're, when you're ready.
I have a hand, are you, I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, Counselor Viho Copley. Were you finished?
Well, I'm, I'm, I have several Page 14s on Prime Gov. So I'd like to ask Ms. Wheeler, which Page 14 are you on?
I'm sorry, it's actually Page one of 14 of the agreement. I think it's just about three pages in there on the packet.
Right. Right. Okay, well, I don't want to belabor this, but I do know that when there's legislative language, it's important to follow it, and those are the basis of my questions. I don't read into this as much as you all do. I read far less, and I just want to make sure that anybody who has opportunity and qualifies to apply for this will not be rejected at first glance because their name isn't Santa Fe Suites. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Abada and then Councilor Merrilworth.
Thank you, Mayor. But it sounds like there's not going to be an application process for this because they qualify under the anti-donation clause, so that there doesn't have to be one. The thing that is going to be put out to bid or to RFP is the actual renovations and who renovates that. Is that correct?
Either Director Lad or Director Wheeler, is that an accurate description? That the, the RFP is about the work, not about the location or the designated recipient as the grant had been worked through the legislature? Is Councilor Abada basically right about that?
That, that is correct. City Attorney, your hand is up. Did you want to say something? Sorry, you are the ultimate authority.
I've had my hand up because I did want to return to the part I had forgotten because immediately we all spoke about RFPs. It's not necessary, it might be an RFP for construction services. It would be whatever is an appropriate procurement method for construction services. So it may or may not be an RFP. So I just don't want people to say, we all said it was an RFP if it ends up being something else, like a state price agreement or something like that. But a procurement method that is valid under our procurement code, that's the one thing I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Right, but, but there's not going to be a procurement or the, to renovate somebody's facility. The renovation is going to be the Santa Fe Suites because they are the only, well, maybe they aren't the only, but they qualify for a direct grant because, or a direct grant from the city because of the service that they provide.
And Mayor Weber, Councilor Abada, I think there's something else important about that, which is this is similar to any other appropriation for a property that the city has an interest in too. It's, it kind of falls somewhere in between. The city does have some interest in this property and has some reversionary ownership interests that we entered at the beginning of the acquisition of the property. So it's like the city getting an appropriation for another building too. We wouldn't go out and have our buildings all compete against each other as to which building would get the renovation. The city would identify the building it wanted to apply the improvements to. And my understanding is it is our preference that it goes to this project, which is one that we are still involved in, and it's success.
So it, the fact that we're involved in it is what allows it to go to Santa Fe Suites?
And Mayor Weber, Councilor Garcia, I'm just saying that's an additional, that's an additional reason in this case. But I think from what we understand, it's the only qualifying entity as well.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Merrilworth.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me? I just wanted to speak to the language, the legislative language from my experience with legislative language. So if you go to Page Four of twenty-three of our packet, which is Page One of fourteen of the, oh darn it. The, what is this? The Agreement, I guess, which, with the Department of Finance. They are pulling it directly from the legislative appropriation. And I will tell you that language that says to plan, design, construct, and renovate is almost a term of art. They do that when they make appropriations at the legislature. And part of the reason they do that is because they don't want to have to come back. If they're, if they only say plan and you plan and you have excess money, then you can't use it for design. Or let's say you, if they say to plan and design and you, you use the money that's been appropriated to plan and design and you have leftover, you can't use it to construct. You'd have to go back. So what they do is they, they take the whole enchilada, so to speak, to plan, design, construct, and renovate. That accounts for any, any possibility for that building. The other thing that they do when they are appropriating to a specific, where they, when they want the appropriation to go where, somewhere specific, they will describe it in a way that only that place that they're wanting to target qualifies. And so that's where you get the, a facility for a homeless and below-market renters, including housing and services in Santa Fe and Santa Fe County. They can't put in the legislation, Santa Fe Suites. So they describe it generally, and they try to use enough terms so that you know what they're talking about, even though you don't say it. So I just want to clarify how that language is, why they do that, and the fact that I think they were very intentional in where they were directing this money, this appropriation. And I just thought I'd provide that insight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Other discussion. Councilor Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Lad, did I hear you correctly that there's no other organization in Santa Fe that would qualify?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Garcia, it's not about the organization, it's about the facility. Right now, we do not have any other facilities that are housing both people transitioning directly out of homelessness as well as lower-income renters who would need these funds now.
Doesn't Casa Malagro fall into that category? I know that they're an institution that provides housing for homelessness as well as folks with mental illness that are transitioning. And I think that's the concern I have that brings me back to my original concern is there are, there are entities, not only in Santa Fe, but I think elsewhere, that could qualify to provide and meet the criteria set forth in designing, constructing, and building the facilities. And I think that's where I want to make sure that we're not predetermining an outcome. Because I think if, and I'm not going to get into the appropriations, but I know that through my experience working with the legislature, if there's going to be earmarked resources, they'll actually identify the organization they want it to go to. And with it, with this appropriation, that was not done. I think it was, it was given in the sense to where it was very open-ended, as Councilor Merrilworth said, but an organization wasn't identified. And I think that's, to me, where my, as I mentioned, my original concerns. And I want to make sure that we're going through this process in a fair manner where any entity can, can qualify, that could qualify for this, would have a fair opportunity to receive the resources.
Director Lad, do you have a, can you respond to the, and we have two hands up, Director Lad and Director Wheeler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilor Garcia, I believe we need to keep focusing on the facility aspect of this, not the entity. But I also think that it's, it's not that, that these aren't good questions and that we shouldn't assume that everything goes as it was planned eighteen months ago, which is to Councilor Merrilworth's point, where that art in writing the language comes from because it's, it's hard to sort of tell the future in some of these projects. But I think tonight's action is to accept the funds. So we're not making the decision tonight where to use them or who benefits from them. We're accepting the funds and putting them into the budget. And I think these, obviously, we have more work to do and we don't even really know what the scope of work is at this point. But we, but we will be working with the council to determine that as we move to the next step.
I wonder if Director Wheeler had her end up too in response to your prior question.
Yes, thank you so much, Mayor. Councilor Garcia, it's not uncommon for us to, as, once we accept funds, to work directly with the legislators that did the appropriation to ensure, and the legislative council services, to ensure that we are executing the intent of the legislative language and the appropriation. And we will definitely continue to do that. For instance, one of the things that I think about is that, you know, as Director Lad has said, Santa Fe Suites wasn't really an established location, but it was certainly an apple in our eye at the time. And the legislature, legislature wanted to support our efforts. I just got to say that I'm so proud of the city of Santa Fe to have come so far in these two years from having, you know, the idea of creating below-market rental housing and homeless housing. I've actually, I just have to tell you, I've received texts from some of the people that we housed at the emergency shelter at Midtown, who have now been housed at Santa Fe Suites. And so I just want to just remember that this is really successful and exciting project and that the legislature is supporting us with this appropriation. One of the questions that I have as well is, you know, what are, what is the scope, as Director Lad said, of the funds needed at Santa Fe Suites to make that a really successful facility? And it's very important that it is designed and constructed appropriately for success there. I mean, these folks are dealing with a number of behavioral health, physical issues. We need to make sure the facility supports good, safe operations for all of the residents. And so, but also, another question of mine is, well, so the scope of the work to be done at Santa Fe Suites is not well-defined at this point. If there are remaining funds, could they be used on perhaps the next facility that I think is now another apple in our eye? And so we'll definitely continue, as we always do, to work closely with legislative services. David is completely diligent about that. He has excellent contacts there. We check with them every step of the way. And we will continue to do that to make sure that we are, you know, delivering what, what the legislature intended for these funds and in the mechanism that meets all code and statutory requirements.
Councilor Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so two things. Ms. Lad, you had mentioned that this is, you'll work with us after approving. I completely understand this is to appropriate or approve the resources. Usually in an instance, we don't approve an RFP or anything beyond that. So how are we going to be involved in the future of this process? You mentioned the governing body will be involved. How, how so?
Director Wheeler, or Director, either one of you, who wants to go first?
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you so much for the question. As with, you know, because of our requirements for approval levels for sizes of projects. So if the scope is above two hundred thousand dollars at this point, it would come back to governing body for approval and of the contract for the services. So and I think, I think it's pretty expected that, that the services at Santa Fe Suites would be at that level.
Okay, thank you so much. I really appreciate that. And I just do want to correct one thing that you had mentioned, Ms. Wheeler, that if we can use it for an additional site, I think Mr. Chapman confirmed that's not the case. This has got to be for a site, not multiple sites. It's got to be for one site. Because that's a question that was raised at Public Works and Utilities, and he did clarify for me that it is for a site. With that, no other questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Abada, did you have something? Your hand was up.
Yeah, I would just like clarification. It was my understanding from my time at Santa Fe County, when a nonprofit wanted to get money to improve their buildings that they owned, they had to give the building to Santa Fe County because the money could not go directly to a nonprofit. And on the other side, running the Boys and Girls Club, I could go to the legislature and get money, but if the city or county doesn't own the building I want to renovate, I, I can't get that, that appropriation. And so my understanding that the reason why we're able to do this with Santa Fe Suites is because the city of Santa Fe does have an interest, some type of ownership in this property that allows us to do that, where with these other shelters that may qualify, don't have that. So it can't go directly to anybody, or it can't be competed for because they, they don't have that same relationship with the city of Santa Fe as Santa Fe Suites does.
Mr. Chapman or City Attorney, can you have, Aaron, do you want to speak to the counselor's question?
Mayor Weber, Councilor Abada, I think there's, there's layers here, unfortunately. There's, there's a part that's political. There's a part that's about the anti-donation clause and the exception being only for care and maintenance of indigent persons. And so some, some nonprofits don't provide care and maintenance of indigent persons. They provide other services to the community. So that's, that's one distinction that could come up. And then another distinction could be the source of funds. And so different bonds are tax-exempt and some are taxable. And I am not bond counsel, but that actually is one of the questions I want to look into with DFA a little bit about this particular appropriation, just to make sure that we're, we're fine. But I think that is, that's one of the, that's one of the questions we just need to make sure we're clear with, with the appropriators because some of the different sources for capital outlay projects have different requirements.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Councilor V. Hill Coppler.
Thank you. I wanted to ask the question, though, Santa Fe Suites, though, reverts, I mean, the, our ownership interest in Santa Fe Suites reverts after ten years. Is that right? So we don't, we won't own that building later. How does that work?
Aaron, do you have information on ownership?
Mayor Weber, Councilor V. Hill Coppler, I don't have that agreement right in front of me. I don't know if Alexandra Lad, Director Lad, has the details, but it doesn't revert to us after ten years. But there is, if certain things happen that aren't what we agreed to, then there's some reversionary interests. And then also the requirement for, I think, the use is at least ten years, but Alex might have some more details.
Actually, my question was opposite, that we don't have ownership in that, in Santa Fe Suites after ten years.
Mayor Weber, Councilor V. Hill Coppler, every lawyer gets excited to talk about property rights and how they're a bundle of sticks. And they all have, there's different elements of property ownership. So we do have some interest in this property. It is absolutely not full interest. You are right.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Director Lad.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor V. Hill Coppler, we do not have an ownership stake, but we have a ten-year timeframe where we can claw back the funds that we have passed through to the entity if they are not performing according to the agreement we have with the entity. We have also put a land use restriction on the property so that it has to be used for affordable housing beyond that ten years. And I apologize, I did not look up the exact term for that, but that's, that's control without ownership.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify that something happened, something happens in ten years. Because when we, when we discuss that, when we discuss Santa Fe Suites, there was a lot of discussion surrounding what that tenure deal meant. And I have to say, I don't recall exactly. So that's why I asked the question. But, and it's kind of related to Councilor Abada's question, only in, my question, only in that we really won't have ownership of Santa Fe Suites. But I appreciate Ms. McSherry's question, response, wherein you said that different strokes for different contracts are different monies. So I get that. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion? If not, is there a further discussion? Could, I see no more hands up. We have a motion in front of us. Could the clerk call the roll, please?
Yes. Councilor V. Hill Coppler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Villarreal?
Yes.
Council Abada?
Yes.
Council Cassett?
Yes.
Council Garcia?
Yes.
Council Lindell?
Yes.
Council Merrilworth?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
Thank you. Thank you for your participation in answering these questions. Much appreciated. Madam Clerk, could you take us to the next item, please?
Yes, the next item is eleven B, request for the approval of Amendment Number Thirteen, the Service Contract Team dash zero five five two, increasing compensation for the upcoming fiscal year by one million, five hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents, to a new total of four million. Through a new total of $4,460,466.74, including NMGRT for security services throughout city facilities. Universal Protection Services, LP, DBA, Allied Universal Security. Sam Burnett, our Public Works Property Maintenance Manager, is available for this item.
Move to approve.
There's a motion from Councillor Mayor Werth to approve and a second from Councillor Lindell. And Mr. Burnett is here for questions. Sam, do you want to, before we get into questions, do you want to give us a brief, or however long it takes, an appropriate overview of what this contract does, what it covers, and why it's coming before us tonight, please? I think you're muted, Sam. At least we're not hearing you.
Can you, yes.
Yes.
Beautiful.
We have you now. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, councillors, thank you very much and good evening. So just some quick background on this contract and contract amendment with Allied Security. This contract is the result of a request for bids held in 2018. The scope of this, the services provided by this contract has kind of expanded and changed over time. Each of the sites included in the contract provide their own funding source as well as their own internal staff member to kind of act as a day-to-day manager for the day-to-day management of their specific security services. While each of these individual sites is all included in this one contract, they are. It wouldn't be inappropriate to kind of consider them their own kind of individual contracts, all borrowing the same RFP source for the provision of these security services. This particular amendment does not change any service provided throughout the city. It's the same services that are currently in place. This amendment will only add compensation for the upcoming fiscal year. At the moment, the sites currently included in this contract include the Genevieve Chavez Community Center at approximately $65,000. The Lafarge Library at approximately $65,000. The Main Library at approximately $67,000. South Side Library at approximately $67,000. Midtown Campus at about $264,000. A mobile patrol for our parking division, checking our parking lots at night at about $66,000. A service for our municipal court at approximately $66,000. The Santa Fe Regional Airport at approximately $198,000. Some service for the Santa Fe Trails offices at 27. The rail yard at $179,000. And finally, the Santa Fe Plaza at $319,000. The number of amendments included in this contract really, I think, reflects our kind of constant reaction or attempts to adjust this contract to meet the kind of changing security needs throughout the city. One of the last amendments, I actually think it was Amendment 12, was designed specifically to allow us greater flexibility in adjusting the service provided at any given site and kind of break and move officers around the city more rapidly to respond to kind of higher, higher need areas. I think the Plaza portion of this contract is an excellent example of that. Directly following the incident that took place on the Plaza this summer, we processed an amendment to provide 24-hour security seven days a week on the Plaza. As time went on, we realized that, you know, that we didn't need that level of security there, and we had other needs that were greater. So we actually broke that contract into three eight-hour blocks. We maintained eight hours on the Plaza. We moved eight hours from the Plaza to Pete's Place and another eight-hour block from the Plaza to the rail yard. But the two other locations were areas where we needed a lot more security. So again, kind of our desire and continual efforts to modify the contract to meet the city's needs. You know, we remain dedicated to doing that and any needs that arise that need to be added to this contract, or if need be subtracted, we're always happy to make those changes. I know an important part of the conversation on Monday was the small amount of money dedicated to the city parks. I think it's important to note that there is a separate contract with a separate vendor that provides security to our parks. That's Chavez Security, and that's maintained by our new Parks Director, Melissa McDonald. If the need arose to provide more security in parks and there was a desire to add that to the allied contract, I would be more than happy to work with anybody interested in processing such an amendment. Or conversely, I think there would be the opportunity to do that with Melissa as well. You know, and finally, just to wrap up, because I have a tendency to ramble, to another step we're taking to try and improve the efficiency and quality of this contract. I'm working with Director at CHOA to actually transfer the management of the security contract from the Public Works Department into the Community Health and Safety Department where there's individuals with skill sets more matched to the topic than mine. And with that kind of long overview, I turn it over to you all for any questions you might have for me.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. Councillor V. Hill Coppler.
Thank you. I am wanting to express that I would want to work with you, Mr. Burnett, about the Parks Amendment. I would have done that Monday night in Public Works, but I believe that you mentioned that we had to proceed with this because of something. It was one of the last ones. And so I think as a, as a Public Works Committee, we agreed to. Okay, so we agreed to move forward with this. But if there's an avenue to allocate more of this funding to parks, I think it is greatly needed. I appreciate that your comment about there being monies for Chavez Security for overseeing, you know, security for the parks, but that's only $90,000. And after Monday, I did get a lot of feedback about how that wasn't at all enough. But I want to state here that we do get, at least in District Four, both Councillor Cassett and I do get a lot, a lot of constituent concerns about things that go on in the parks. And I know it's not just District Four, it's elsewhere as well. I got two more complaints today, and we got one this morning. So, you know, it's important to remember that there's a whole other mixed bag of of issues in other parts of the city. And it's really important to consider that, that there's a great need there. And I believe that the funding should be at least appropriate and not so disproportionate to, you know, various things that go on in all of Santa Fe. But the parks are important and our youth are important. And especially now, it's summertime, we're not going to have the bicentennial pool open. And so kids need something to do. And unfortunately, there are people who walk our parks and go through and do things that aren't appropriate for for parks' use. And that usually happens in the night because then the parents call us and they say, this is what the park looks like, looked like when I took my kids to play. And I don't know how familiar staff is with the issues and the complaints that we get. But I'm really surprised that there's not more money allocated to security at parks. We have to have a presence there. And I do know that some people believe the police department should do it all. Well, we also enlist their help when we have these complaints. But, you know, when there's a robbery in place or there's something else going on, that's going to be higher priority. And so, you know, parks, I know they patrol them, but believe me, people who want to do not-so-good things in parks at night, they'll just hide out till the cop leaves and assesses that there's nothing going on. Somehow this happens, and I just think that we need to prioritize where our security funds are spent. Try to assist the police department in any way we can, but parks, we have a lot of parks. And they're not in such good stead right now when, when we have the activity, the illicit activity going on in them. So I do want to work with you. I don't know how we do that. But in the interest of saving the particular item that you're concerned about getting passed tonight, I can, you know, certainly support this for many of the other reasons, but I'm not going to lay back on the parks. So thank you.
Thank you, Councillor.
Mr. Mayor, Councillor V. Hill Coppler, excuse me.
Go ahead, Sam.
I will send you an email after today and anything I can do to help you navigate the process. I'd be more than happy to do that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I think that, let me just say a few words and then I'll come over to you, Councillor Cassett. I think a lot of what we're discussing tonight is important, not just about this particular item, but a larger assessment of where we are as we come out of COVID. And that's really the context for some of the comments about security in the parks and the grooming and care of our parks and recreation facilities. We had an extended discussion about the bicentennial pool because we really care deeply about what families and kids are going to experience this summer and going forward, coming out of a year and a half of real serious deprivation. And now we are coming out of it with incredible speed. The recovery and economic rejuvenation that we're seeing across our economy is quite remarkable. Nationally, people are saying they haven't seen anything like it. Locally, I haven't seen anything like it. And it's both economically rewarding, which means we will have more GRT resources to apply to issues as people come back out into our community, and it'll mean that we have greater demands as people want to enjoy our parks and our facilities. And so those two things coincide. And it particularly is important on the South Side where so many of our young families are looking for a chance to get back out and have fun and enjoy the parks. Part of it is the capital investments in the parks, and we just went over a discussion about capital allocations. We had a $1 million capital allocation from the state legislature and the governor to improve our parks. We put another $1 million in the budget for our parks. So coming into this summer, there will be more assets and investment, particularly on the South Side where so many of our families live and young people need to get out and be able to enjoy our recreational opportunities in the parks. But we also need to look at security, and I think we need to look at it in two ways. One is through this kind of contract and the $90,000 contract that was referenced that already exists. We will have money to add to that because we have additional GRT. And if it is the desire of our governing body to additionally allocate GRT resources to a more security for parks, we will have the ability to do that. We also have, I think, a bigger responsibility, and this is something that perhaps Councillor Abeta can speak to. And that is, we need to look at what our young people are doing that really speaks to better choices. Security is really a good way to provide safety, and police presence provides safety. But programs for kids to have better choices, where we sit down with them, as we did last summer with Youth Works, with our police department, with faith leaders, with the Boys and Girls Club, with other organizations, to offer young people who might otherwise make bad choices a chance to get jobs or get a GED, also makes our parks safer. So I think we need a really comprehensive approach on helping young people have fun, stay safe, make good choices. And I think in particular, because parks are so significant to where those activities take place, we will be working to keep them clean, keep them safe, add facilities to them, add more kitty and young people play activities. We'll be working with parents and ball clubs, so they're involved in the maintenance, upkeep, and safety of those facilities. And I believe we're going to see a very strong commitment of dollars, hours, people, partnerships. And again, it will take place where most of our young people are active, and that's on the South Side. Where, over the last summers before we had COVID, we had South Side Summer with movies and music and fun. We are not able to do that this summer, but we'll do other things this summer. So the parks are places where families can safely play and enjoy the summer in Santa Fe. Councillor Cassett.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Burnett, can I just confirm that Pete's Place is included on this contract? I see it listed here. It says Municipal Court, Pete's Place, but you had not listed it on the list that you provided us.
Mr. Mayor, Councillor Cassett, yes. At the moment, we are covering Pete's Place. And that is, when I spoke about how we broke up the 24-hour coverage from the Plaza into three eight-hour blocks, one eight-hour block was dedicated to patrolling the neighborhood directly around Pete's Place and the general vicinity. So it is covered and through that, kind of our ability to kind of modify the contract on the fly.
Okay, thank you so much. And then do you happen to have on hand the list of parks that are covered under the other contract?
Mr. Mayor, Councillor Cassett, I actually do not. I apologize. I would have to defer to Director McDonald.
Okay, no problem. And when we are looking at the different coverage, I think that would be important to see what that money gets us, how much security is given, what type of security. You know, it's kind of a broader picture than just the dollar amount, but what do those dollars get us? And having a really deep understanding of what that looks like, which brings me to my next question, which is, you had mentioned, you know, this has been a bit of an iterative contract, that it has expanded and maybe contracted to address different issues that come up. And I'd like to hear a little bit more about the process of how we decide what areas need security and what level of security and the frequency of security for specific areas. And, because I also think that's important as we continue to move forward and look at, do we have the correct security in the correct places at the correct times?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor, Councillor Cassett. So I think it's good to preface this with, to give you all the understanding that while I have kind of become the de facto kind of contract manager for the security contract, my role at the city really isn't security-focused. And so how these changes evolve is generally somebody, there'll be a location somewhere in the city where there's an incident or series of incidents, be it a library. Now parks are another good example of something that may be evolving. And I'll get contacted and they'll say, can you help us work with Allied? We'd like to explain this problem to you. We would like to get Allied's input on the best level of security and frequency of security to deal with it. And then I'll kind of work as a liaison between the company and the entity within the city that needs the service. You know, I'll help, I'll get the quote, I'll work with the, you know, the particular site to find funding. If there isn't enough funding available, I help kind of like modify the proposal from Allied to fit budget. And then once all that's done, I just, I go through the process of processing an amendment, adding that service to the contract, helping that entity issue their own PO to Allied, and then connecting the allied Santa Fe Account Manager with a specific person. a specific person on that site to kind of act as the liaison between the two entities. So from where I sit and the role I play, that's essentially how it unfolds. I think one of the big, and, and because that's clearly not probably the best way for this to operate is why we've begun the conversation with the Community Health and Safety Department to have somebody there who really, uh, has a, a better knowledge of the trade and, uh, you know, more global knowledge of what's happening in the city to kind of provide better guidance and, you know, in my place.
Uh, I, I appreciate that because it does sound like it's a little bit, uh, ad hoc, kind of like we're playing that, you know, arcade game where we're just hitting the gophers on the head as opposed to taking a strategic view of where security is needed in the city. And, and, um, I do want to say, you know, thank you for the work that you've done on this. I know this is not your background, but, um, you've, you've done a wonderful job and we really do appreciate it. Um, and I guess my next question would be is, is do we measure how effective security is in addressing the particular issues that we bring security to a specific location, uh, to address?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, Counselor Cassidy, um, yes and no. I think, uh, I, I think a good, uh, a good way to explain it, so there is, they do collect data. We do pay for a device. It's a, it's a smartphone with a special program on it called Helios. It tracks officers in real time. They log all their incidents into it and it builds a database of information for the site they're working in. So that's one metric we can use to like kind of track Allied's activity and, you know, the incidents that they've prevented from happening. So yeah, there is, there's very much concrete, you know, kind of scientific data gathered over time that lets us assess what's happening in a particular site. Um, for me, uh, the, I was originally, I originally got involved because of my, um, you know, management of the Midtown site, which when I first, when we, when I first started, the city had first taken over management of it. And it was a pretty, it was a pretty difficult site due to a real, um, a, a large population of, of homeless encampments and, um, illicit activities. And I was able to work with Allied, you know, between a six and eight month period, we, we absolutely 100% transformed, um, reality on the ground at Midtown. So just speaking from a, you know, personal experience perspective, it's very easy to, to really see and feel and realize the benefit of the security services. So I think there's really two ways to kind of interpret the benefit or realize the benefit, and I think both of them are generally pretty clear that it's very beneficial to the city.
Well, that's, that's really good to hear, and, and I'm hoping also as we're, we're taking almost a more universal look at this and that these different security companies and the different types of security, um, that is deployed for different areas and different problems, um, how we might be able to just be really strategic about it. Um, you know, I, I think that there's another benefit of this moving over to Community Health and Safety, which is I, I would be remiss not to speak about some of the other issues that are, are adding to this. The mayor mentioned, you know, youth programming and making sure that, that, um, our kids are making good decisions, but a, a lot of the issues that we see are, um, from homelessness and addiction and, um, mental health challenges. And we know that these are areas that we, uh, need to really be addressing. Security, as you, as you just pointed out, absolutely helps, um, mitigate the, the issues that we see. Uh, but if we really do want to make a dent, I think it's, you know, important for us as we're looking at, how do we really make the city safe that it's not just about the security piece? We really need to be, uh, looking at the prevention. So I think that for us, as we are looking at where our dollars go, it's really this balance about how do we address the issues right now in the short term to make sure that there are safe places for our kids and our families to play, that the neighborhoods around Pete's Place are safe, as we, you know, all had a very robust discussion about that. That was a long time ago. We were actually in person. Wow, um, over a year ago, um, as, as well as some of the other problems that we've seen in the city, but we also need to look at where, where the prevention piece, um, can come in as well. And so while, again, Sam, you've done such a wonderful job, I, I do see another benefit for this, uh, moving over to Community Health and Safety. Um, and I, I look forward to maybe having an opportunity as we talk about this more to mine some of that data that you guys have been, um, collecting so we can really have a, a better comprehension of what these issues look like and, and how they can best be addressed in the short term, as well as looking at some of the long-term strategies for prevention. That's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, Counselor Lindell, then Counselor Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make this brief. Um, Mr. Burnett, thank you very much. You know, it makes sense to me, um, that we go ahead and, uh, pass this contract. We, we budgeted for this. This comes from numerous different sources. And if we need to have more security in parks and other places, um, I think that there's no reason that we shouldn't assess that, take a look at it, and, and do that with a plan in mind and assessing what our needs are for it, and go ahead and move forward on that. But I think we also need to go ahead and pass what we have now. There's not one item or location on that list that doesn't need the security that they have right now. Painfully enough, we've been through every one of those locations to go ahead and give security to all of them. And so I hope that we can move forward past this and, um, then start to work very methodically on where else we need some security. Uh, I'm more than happy to work on that with anybody that wants to work on it. So, um, that, that's, that's the work that I'm willing to do, and we've already done a lot of work to get these current contracts in place. And I think one of the really important things that we've done is to have one person overseeing those. Um, instead of each department or one person from here and there and everywhere overseeing this, this is a much more centralized way of doing this, and it's much more efficient use of personnel and our resources. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Garcia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, uh, Sam, please add me to the list of counselors that want to work at looking at appropriate additional resources to, uh, the parks contract. I think one thing that this did was it brings to the attention that, and, and I'm sure my colleagues can attest to this of the question of why aren't we having the police do this work? And I think we all know that while our police force is pretty thin at the moment and, um, there, there might be more pressing issues, my, my response to that then is, can we look at providing public safety aides instead of security to provide these services? Um, it's, it's been talked about in the past as public, having a public safety aide be that kind of path line to a police officer. So, so with that, I'd, I'd like to plant that seed with us. Can we look at that? Can, instead of awarding these contracts to, and outsource them, why not look internally and develop staff internally? Develop that pipeline that not only provides city support, but the pipeline for city staff to potentially become officers or any other position within the city. We get them in the city and that, that we can nurture them and grow them into maybe another position. So is there anything that would prohibit us from developing that? Maybe there's, I know the public safety aides now, I usually see them responding to car crashes. But is there anything we can do in the sense to expand their job description or public, we have a, a new position, Public Safety Aide two, or whatever it is, to really develop this? I mean, I, I think this is something the city needs to take control of and not outsource it. So I think that's, that, that's a topic for another day. Um, Sam, it's not in your realm. I think that's Miss, more so Miss Pachoa's, but I think we really need to look at how we can begin to take care of our own business and not outsource it. With that, thank you, Sam, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Counselor Veho Copler, you have the floor.
Thank you. I, I have a question, Mr. Barnett Burnett, about the, the graph or the chart that you, that you have attached here, and it goes back to the, my question is about the Pete's Place. I want to make sure I understand this. So if you go to the, the portion, uh, where it mentions Pete, Pete's Place, it, it hyphens it with Municipal Court. Are these six hours shared with Municipal Court, or is that an error?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Veho Copler, yes, that is actually hours shared with Municipal Court because they actually hold hearings at Pete's Place, and they requested additional services to cover, um, the judge and the clerk who would go from Municipal Court to Pete's Place to ensure their safety when they were there. Um, when I took over the contract, um, it, it kept getting added on as overtime hours, which causes prob, you know, everything's pre-planned when it comes to funding on our side. So it became important to actually include that rather small amount of money in the contracts to avoid the overtime. The, the, and then, um, I know it's confusing, but, uh, in addition to that, I, again, I broke up that 24 hours on the Plaza and have dedicated one eight-hour block from the Plaza to the Pete's Place neighborhood, um, seven days a week. And so right now, we're kind of, um, via Amendment 12, we're able to kind of, uh, borrow from particular sites to, to compensated others. And so, uh, that's why Pete's Place comes up in two different ways, and one of them isn't on the list.
Well, okay, that was what I was going to ask you. This chart is not really up to date.
Um, correct. I- in a way, it is not, uh, um, it is up to date because the funding is still dedicated to the Plaza, and there is not a dedicated, um, line item for, for Pete's Place. That was not added to the contract. It could be, at the moment, we're, we're kind of dividing one site into three sites to ensure it's covered.
So I remember at Public Works asking you about whether Pete's Place and Harrison Road would have security because that's also a, a very dire need. And it, and it's, it happens way at night. When I did the graveyard right around, it was very eye-opening as to what, what really goes on at night. But, uh, I did also remember you saying in Public Works that there's a, I, I think I recall you saying there's a catch-all, uh, in here somewhere, which gives you the latitude to, uh, move funds around and such. And is that what I hear you saying is that you've then now decided to allocate more time to the patrol and security at Pete's Place?
Absolutely. That's exactly, that's exactly correct. And, um, I, I'll make a couple clarifying points. One, I think the catch-all you're referring to is I added, um, a, uh, $60,000 contingency to the contract for emergency situations so we could respond to something totally unforeseen. And then at the same time I did that, I added the flexibility to kind of move officers from one site to another to help cover things. And that's how we're, exactly how we're covering Pete's Place at the moment.
Thank you for that. And then I just want to remind you that, um, I do want to, uh, assist in trying to find solutions on this security contract for parks. And, um, so I don't want you to forget me on that list.
Um, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Veho Copler, it's a, um, right, the only thing on the paper in front of me is to email, um, yourself, uh, Counselor Garcia and Counselor Lindell, um, to talk about how to, uh, make a plan for security in parks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Other comments? Uh, if there's no further discussion and we have a motion, could the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Villarreal?
Yes.
Counselor Abeta?
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Romero Worth?
Yes.
Counselor Veho Copler?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
Thank you. I'd, uh, point out to people who are watching or listening and anticipating the six o'clock session that, uh, we have a very long set of additional items under discussion and action, uh, as well as a presentation on Midtown, uh, before we get to the six o'clock section, uh, session. So, uh, please be advised that, uh, the six o'clock session clearly won't happen at six o'clock, but you might want to monitor it to see where we are as we make progress through the agenda. With that, could you, uh, take us to the next item, please, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Item 11C is request for approval of service agreement in the total amount of $334,873 for roof, HVAC and employee parking security measures through Pluma LLC. Karen Gross, our facilities project administrator, is available for this item.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Counselor Romero Worth and a second from Counselor Lindell. Before we get a presentation, let's see if there are specific discussion items or questions from the governing body. I, I don't see any hands going up. Uh, if there are no questions and no discussion, uh, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Counselor Abeta?
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Romero Worth?
Yes.
Counselor Veho Copler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Villarreal?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Could you take us to the next item, please, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. The next item is item B, request for approval of Amendment Number Five, to Alpha Southwest for emergency repairs for the, uh, wastewater, Water Division Source of Supply in the amount of $211,015.63 for fiscal year 2022, and extending the term through June 30th, 2022. Jonathan Monclia, our Source and Supply Operation Manager, is available for this item, and I believe Efren is also on the call. Mr., yes, uh, Efren Morales is also available for this item.
Move to approve.
There's a motion from Counselor Romero Worth to remove this, or approve this item, and from Counselor Lindell, a second. Is there a discussion or questions? If not, could the clerk please call the roll on this item?
Counselor Cassidy?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera? Oh, sorry, Counselor Romero Worth?
Yes.
Counselor Veho Copler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Villarreal?
Yes.
Counselor Abeta?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
Thank you. Could you take us to the next item, please?
Yes. The next item is item E, request for approval of Amendment Number Two, the Professional Services Agreement 19-Bash-0235 with Hazen to provide on-call engineering services for capital improvement and priority projects in the amount of $500,000 exclusive of NMGRT. Uh, William Schneider, our Water Resources Manager, is available for this item. I also want to note that there is an item E1, which is request for, request for approval of the Budget Adjustment Resolution, transferring the amount.
Move to approve both.
Second.
There's a motion to approve both and a second from Counselor Veho Copler. Uh, Counselor Woman Villarreal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wanting staff to just explain the relationship between E, the actual, um, contract with Hazen, and then how it relates to the MOA with the Bureau of Reclamation. And then there's- And then there's another item for a services contract. So if you could just like put that together for us, I had great notes for you for finance, but all of them disappeared when we didn't have our meeting. So I don't, I don't have specific questions, other than I remember that I was trying to understand the relationship between Hazen. If, I think they're the contractor that would be hired under the Bureau of Reclamation grant. So maybe you could just explain that.
Mr. Mayor and Counselor Villarreal. Basically, the contract before you now is item E is to serve for engineering permitting and planning services to support the water division's CIP program. We typically budget anywhere from 12 to 16 million dollars per year for that program. And so this contract provides those services. This contract is, should be considered separate for, with respect to the MOA, which we're going to hope get to next is item F. The MOA is associated with a grant that we submitted through the Bureau of Reclamation following sort of Resolution 2020-41, seeking outside funding. And that MOA basically is designed to support the city's Santa Fe 2100 water planning, as well as to develop an analytical model to help us develop criteria and methodologies to evaluate water resources under climate change and future drought planning.
Okay, so I, I realize this is a different PSA. So when we get to the other ones, maybe you could explain Hazen's relationship with the MOA with the Bureau of Reclamation. So I think that's the next item. So in this case, this is just the PSA for on-call engineering services, correct?
Correct.
So in the next one, maybe you could explain the relationship with Hazen when we get to F and H.
Gladly. Thank you.
Thank you. Move to approve. Oh, wait, we already had that.
Any other discussion or questions on this particular item? Could the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Romero Worth?
Yes.
Counselor Vihil Koppler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Villarreal?
Yes.
Counselor Beta?
Yes.
Counselor Cassett?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
Thank you. Could you take us then to the next item?
Yes, item F is request for approval of the MOA with the City of Santa Fe and the United States Bureau of Reclamation to support the ongoing water supply planning efforts specified in City Resolution 2019-56. William is still available for this item.
Move to approve.
There's a motion to approve, and there is a second. And Counselwoman Villarreal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you elaborate now?
Yeah, gladly.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Villarreal. So basically, the city has received a grant that's memorialized in the MOA. And what this grant essentially does is allow to bring resources to bear to effectively work towards a basin study update under the Water Smart Program. And so underwater smart grants are allocated as a 50-50 cost share agreements. So Reclamation brings their resources to bear, either technical or even financial through contractors they bring onboard to provide the services outlined in the MOA. But the city also has a responsibility through the MOA to bring a like amount to support the effort. And in the case of Hazen, which will be the subsequent contract under item H, that scope of services is basically to utilize Hazen to develop this decision model. We're deeming it stewards to complete the analysis to support Santa Fe 2100, as well as to develop and update the city's 40-year water plan.
Thank you. So Hazen is the contractor. So in order to complete the requirements of the Reclamation Grant, we are hiring Hazen to do the modeling for us. Is that correct?
That is correct. And so it's effectively a package deal. Correct.
So what's the city staff's role in the grant program?
Yeah, so it's varied. So the key technical players will be Jesse Roach, who has a PhD in modeling and will be overseeing the technical aspects. I will be the project manager, as well as the contract manager. We will be working with Hazen and the Bureau of Reclamation to evaluate all the new climate model simulations on the hydrology side of things. That's Reclamation's role. As well as developing this model and then unveiling it with the public, sort of community engagement piece to look at what Reclamation likes to describe as adaptation strategies, which you may recall from the original basin study, ways to address shortages in the future of water supply. And so the model will be a very effective tool. It's designed to address water rights, water availability, regulatory restrictions, et cetera. And Marcos Martinez, although as an attorney, is also a water rights specialist, will be closely involved every step of the way as well.
Thank you for the clarification. And then just understanding the amount with this item or with this grant. Not all of it. I was trying to remember the full amount. It was like 500 and I can't remember the
Do you remember the total amount of the grant?
Yeah, so basically, the contribution from Bureau of Reclamation for their, for their portion is $269,000. The contribution in terms of the contract allocation for Hazen to develop the model exceeds that amount slightly. It's 297,000 with GRT. And the reason for that, what we'll say, a beyond 50-50 match is a subtle, you know, slight difference, is because we added scope beyond the requirements of the Water Smart Grant to parlay the modeling into Santa Fe 2100. It was such a strong community request through our planning process that kicked off this past year to reengage every step of the way that we needed additional support to run those analyses.
Got it. And then the remainder, that extra amount that you were talking about, that comes from which, which fund?
Well, it comes out of the city's, the water division's CIP. So that's going to be part of the city's contribution to the 50-50 cost share.
Got it. Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. Are there other questions on this item? If not, could the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor. Also, I have Counselor Romero Worth with the motion. I did not hear who the second was. I don't know if the microphone just
Counselor Vihil Koppler.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Romero Worth?
Yes.
Counselor Vihil Koppler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Villarreal?
Yes.
Counselor Beta?
Yes.
Counselor Cassett?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
Thank you. If you could take us to the next item then, please. Thank you, Mr. Schneider. We'll be seeing you in a minute.
Yes, the next item is request for approval of Amendment Number Three to a Professional Services Agreement with ACOM Technical Services Incorporated to provide on-call engineering services for capital improvement program CIP projects in the amount of 542,188. Robert Jorgensen is available for this item, and I am going to promote him into the meeting. Give me one moment, Mayor. I just promoted him, so he should be popping up.
Move to approve.
Second.
I heard a motion from Counselor Romero Worth, the second from Counselor Lindell. We're waiting for Mr. Jorgensen to join us. In the meantime, let me just poll the governing body. Are there questions on this item that we could anticipate? I see no hands going up. Could you please call the roll on the item then?
Yes, Counselor Romero Worth? Counselor Vihil Koppler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Villarreal?
Yes.
Counselor Beta?
Yes.
Counselor Cassett?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
Thank you for joining us, Mr. Jorgensen.
Thank you. I don't know why the camera's not working, but you're lucky.
It worked fine, and your item was just approved.
Yeah, no, I heard everything. Thank you.
Very good. Madam Clerk, could you take us to the next item?
The next item is item eight, request for approval of a professional services contract with Hazen Engineering for Technical Services to support 2100 water planning through June 20th, 2024 in the amount of $298,448, inclusive of NMGRT. William Schneider is still available for this item.
Move to approve.
And there is a sub-item, if I'm not
Move to approve both.
Motion to approve both items and a second from Counselor Romero Worth and a second from Counselor Lindell. Are there questions for Mr. Schneider on this particular item? Counselor Cassett?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Schneider, are you, are you here?
I am. My video's not on, but yes.
The joys of hybrid. I just had a really quick question about the scope of work. And there was this list of items that the model would not simulate, but that we could potentially add in. And I was just curious, is this, you know, Hazen just kind of telling us what we can do? Are these things that we would be interested in potentially? And why were they not included at this time?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Cassett Sanchez, so thank you for the question. We basically conducted a very rigorous back and forth on the, on the development of the scope of services, not only with Hazen and internally, but also with the Bureau of Reclamation. And so some of the aspects that we identified that would not be included in the model is to essentially give it bounds. We felt as though at this stage of the process, it was not necessary for us to meet the objectives of the project itself. And so these are things that in the future, we may revisit, bring back to the governing body for approval if we decide to proceed. But to meet the objectives of the, outlined in the MOU, it's not necessary at this time, based on our professional judgment.
Okay, so basically, I'm understanding that in the future, we might, we might decide that we want to move forward and be looking at these items. And then at that time, we'll make that decision and find dollars for it.
Exactly. Yes, maybe an additional grant.
Okay. All right, that was it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? If not, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll on the item?
Yes, Counselor
You missed your name. Who did you call?
Oh, Counselor Vihil Koppler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Villarreal?
Yes.
Counselor Beta?
Yes.
Counselor Cassett?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Romero Worth?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
Thank you. And please take us to the next item.
All right. Item I is request for approval of award and acceptance of recurring federal planning funding, Section 112 and Section 5303, FTA funds for Santa Fe MPO, Section 112 for the MOA between the NMDOT and the Santa Fe MPO. It's contract number 3202718, Section 5303 of the Cooperative Agreement between the NMDOT and the Santa Fe MPO. This is summary acceptance of reoccurring grant awards to support the Santa Fe MPO management. Eric Ani is available for this item.
And there is also a sub-item one there.
Move to approve both. Second.
A motion to approve from Counselor Romero Worth, the second from Counselor Manviral. Are there questions or discussion of this item, of these items, A and, or main and sub-one? Could you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilwoman Villarreal?
Yes.
Counselor Beta?
Yes.
Counselor Cassett?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell? Oh, Counselor Lindell? All right. Counselor Romero Worth?
Yes.
Counselor Vihil Koppler?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
Counselor Lindell, you are going to go for emergency reasons home. Will you be joining us on Zoom?
I will. Thank you.
But you'll miss a few items. So we'll re-enter you when you come back in. And Madam Clerk, please be on the lookout for Counselor Lindell joining us virtually because of extenuating circumstances. That said, could you please take us to the next item then?
Yes, item 11J is request for approval of the 2020 State Homeland Security Grant Program Sub Grant Agreement. in the total amount of $260,749.19 in the Mexico Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management. Ryan Williams, our Director of Emergency Management and Safety, is available for this item.
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion to approve from Counselor Romero Worth and a second from Counselor Cassett. And there's a hand up from Counselwoman Villarreal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for joining us, Director Williams. Just a couple of questions. Curious why this didn't go through committees?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, I think this package represents my 50 secret trial and error lessons. I did upload it in Prime Gov to all three committee meetings, but apparently it did not take for finance and quality of life. And so in the interest of trying to get moving forward with the training of the police officers with the K-9 dogs, we ask to expedite this.
Okay, thanks. And the other question I had was, it talks about this particular funding source supporting special operations, but it doesn't describe in detail about what that entails, other than listing the K-9 training you had just mentioned. So it does, it does say machinery and equipment. So can you tell us more about what this will cover?
I think I'd like to defer to Chief Bedea to talk about the specific equipment that is requested here.
Chief, can you respond to the question about what equipment will be, the training is designed to be applied to?
Yes, definitely. Sorry, the camera wasn't firing up there. I was idling in motion. But Mr. Mayor, governing body, the special operations is that group of K-9 officers, the SWAT team, the crisis negotiating team, that is the group and the emergency response team or the riot officers. That's the special operations. So that's that entire group. But for the specifics, I will refer it off here to Deputy Chief Ben Valdez, and he can cover a little bit further.
Deputy Chief, are you there? There you are.
Good evening, Counsel, Mayor Weber, Counselor Bedea. So with this project we're doing, as we're building upon the improvements we have made, so we're looking to add two additional K-9s and the equipment that we will need to outfit the vehicles. So that is one of the priorities that we need to get, because we are looking to submit a request to purchase additional vehicles here after the new fiscal year. And with the addition of these two officers that will pass a selection process, we will need that equipment. So that covers the outfit for the kennel in the back and all the other equipment that they would need, such as their, the kennel that will be maintained by the police officer at their residence, the leash, all the other things that they would need to be able to be operational. So that's one of the equipment. The other equipment that's going to be purchased is protective equipment. So our gas masks for all of our special operations units, they will receive somewhere between 2002 two thousand and two, two thousand and four, right after nine eleven. Um, and they're the M forty military masks. So we're looking to go to a different mask. It's an Avon mask, which allows it to be um, it looks more like a like a goggle mask, but the biggest benefit to that is has a speaker that's built in that is battery operated that allows for more clear communication. So if they do have to give verbal commands to someone, uh, they will be much more clear in comparison to the M forty, which is um, a non-amplified um, speaker box is what they call it. So that's gonna be much improved and it'll use more of a civilian type NIOSH filter rather than the military M forty mask um, filter uh, that we've, we are currently using. But it'll replace that equipment that is um, aged and in need of replacement. Um, the other PPE is the rifle plates. Um, right now, we have rifle plates that are issued to all of our staff for um, critical incident response where there is a threat of gunfire, uh, especially rifle fire. Um, the plates that will be purchased for these special operations teams are the lightweight type. So they are more than half of the wood. They're less than, more than half of the weight of the current ones we issued to our patrol section. Um, because of the, the time and duration, they may be on a scene. Um, they could be on an operation for thirty minutes for a pretty straightforward warrant service, or they could be on a barricade situation or a situation where uh, they have to respond to a situation civil unrest where there's a threat of rifle fire and they're on scene for several hours. So it'll provide them for the protection that'll supplement their body armor that we currently provide them, which is three A body armor. And that'll allow them to uh, be operational in that aspect. Uh, this has been purchased in the past with this type of grants and the places they currently have are expired. Um, so they still will be um, helpful against these rifle threats, but with them being expired, um, if it fails, it's gonna be a liability issue with our staff. So we're trying to get that stuff completed. So everyone is um, provided the equipment that they do need uh, to be safe while they're out there operating.
Thank you for the additional information. Can you clarify? You said for the vehicles, it was specific, specifically vehicles that would um, be utilized for canine dogs so that there's a kennel component in the back? And was that the only vehicle you were talking about?
Um, Mayor Weber, Council Bedea, um, yes, so it would be a patrol vehicle. Um, we're looking at, we did the Ford Explorer. Um, it, it's a great platform for patrol, but we found with our two canines that we added to our uh, department about almost a year and a half ago. The, the vehicle platform's a bit small for all the equipment they need. They have to carry uh, dog food, water, um, plus their other protective equipment as a patrol officer. So we're gonna look at a Ford Expedition, which um, is really fuel efficient. It has the V six on it. Um, and those are the vehicles will be updating. So the equipment is gonna be the kennel and much of the stuff from the seat back. So it would not include the other standard equipment we would purchase with the police vehicle, which is like the light bar, the computer and everything else pretty much from the front seat forward. Uh, but much of the equipment that would be used to house and maintain uh, the animal in a safe condition, um, so they can be in the vehicle. That's what the outfit is gonna be for the equipment for the vehicle itself. But um, it's gonna be a, a patrol vehicle with decals, um, with a kennel in the back.
Got it. Thanks for the clar- clarification. So the Avon mask you're talking about, that's a gas mask. So what, in what circumstances do you all use that?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Council Bedea, um, that is mostly used if there is either a threat of a chemical um, irritant in the air. Um, that can be used if they have to respond to a situation where someone deploys some type of chemical irritant. Or if they do a barricade and they need to um, deploy chemical munitions to get someone uh, dislodged from that location uh, to kind of mitigate the need to use additional force. Um, that would be something that is used pretty much um, after all of the means have been exhausted. Um, or if in a situation where it cannot be reasonably employed, uh, other means cannot be reasonably employed. Um, and they have to deploy chemical munitions on a barricade such as a hostage rescue to get people evacuated and um, have the person that is posing a threat uh, be put at disadvantage. Um, with these chemical irritants, they are uh, based on um, capsicum um, irritants. So it's much like your chili powder. Um, it's a little bit more intense. And if you're peeling green chili and rubbing it in your eye. Uh, but what it does is um, once you get outside in the air, it's allowed to be um, decontaminated from the individual with um, fresh air, water, um, and we go from there.
Thank you. And you said, I didn't hear what you said, but rifle plates is basically body armor?
Mr. Mayor, Council Bedea, yes ma'am. So it's a plate that is used in addition to the current body armor that our staff has. So they have uh, three A body armor, which protects against um, most pistol um, munitions. There are a few uh, special munitions that are pistol rated, such as the five point seven that it would not protect with three A. With the rifle plates, it would protect against those high velocity rounds, such as the five point seven pistol round and the rifle rounds, such as um, those from like um, a hunting rifle, um, two two three, seven point six two, um, anything that is uh, but gonna be below a fifty cal. Um, it's still gonna hurt the officer quite a bit, but again, it's gonna increase their ability to survive one of those strikes if hit with the plate in conjunction with that body armor.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Valdez. It's helpful to have these details because they're not in the packet material or in the grant. So it's just helpful for us to know and the public to know what's, what's involved with the um, money that we get or, or the equipment we get from Homeland Security. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you. If you could please call the role, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Council Beta.
Yes.
Council Cassett.
Yes.
Council Garcia.
Yes.
Council Romero Worth.
Yes.
Council V. Hill Coppler.
Yes.
Councilwoman Vera L.
Yes.
Mayor Weber.
Yes.
Item has been approved.
Thank you. I believe uh, our next item is a midtown overview, if you want to introduce that.
Sure, the next item is item twelve A. It's our Midtown Planning and Development Biweekly Report. It's done by our Office of Economic Development. Rich Brown, the Department Director of Community and Economic Development, is available for this item. Believe the information topic for this evening is furniture, um, fixtures and equipment. We have Amber Burnett and Robert Lambert presenting on this item.
Mr. Brown, you want to introduce this?
Sure. Good, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Thank you so much for having us. Uh, tonight, we bring you one of our biweekly reports uh, for midtown redevelopment of the parcel. Uh, tonight's report, uh, that we actually presented this morning at the EDAC Committee, uh, is on uh, FFNE, uh, which are called FFNE, which is furniture fixtures and equipment. Uh, both Sam Burnett, who spoke earlier, and Rod Lambert and Pauline Kamiyama will speak to uh, the details. Sam will talk about uh, the furniture fixtures and equipment, and then Rod and uh, Pauline will talk about the assets uh, that we have under the city and what our plans are. So with that, I'd like to turn it over first to um, Sam Burnett, and he will then uh, share the screen and uh, presentation with Rod and Pauline.
Thank you very much, Rich. Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, councilors, good evening once again. Um, again, as Rich just said, I'm gonna begin with an explanation of our current planning um, for the management and disposition of the general uh, furnitures, fixtures and equipment. Um, lovingly referred to as FFNE that exist um, on the midtown site. Um, and uh, that, that'll transition well into uh, Mr. Lambert and Mrs. Kamiyama, Miss Kamiyama's um, work and uh, information related to the art and cultural assets. Um, in regards to the FFNE, um, I've developed a, a four straight stage strategy to assess, preserve, distribute and or dispose of the assets located at the midtown site. Um, these four strategies are s- uh, or stages are all kind of variations on the same process. And um, I apologize if the explanation seems redundant at, at any given time in the, as I, as I talk through it. So um, the first step um, that I, I, I believe we should take and that we collectively, the steering committee, believe we, we should take would be to assess and identify the assets that we believe should be retained by the city. Um, these assets are, um, this, this ties directly into what Mr. Lambert will talk about shortly, but these are the assets that have um, a special economic, cultural, historic or artistic value that uh, we believe the city should retain either itself or through agreements with other government entities, educational institutions or nonprofit entities. So the first step in this stage would be to uh, go through the campus, uh, assess these items, develop a, a comprehensive list. We would then take this list over to the steering committee to review and approve. And then uh, the first step, at least for me, as I transition the process over to Mr. Lambert and Miss Kamiyama would be to create a secure repository at the midtown site to store those assets to make sure they're well preserved and are safe and don't get uh, mixed up in any of the following processes. Um, the second step would be to identify and preserve assets that are specific to buildings on the site. There are a couple of really good examples of what, what this means. Um, one is the Visual Arts Center was designed by um, a, a famous architect, Mr. Legareta. When he designed the buildings, he also designed special, specialty furniture that was constructed along with the building and should very much remain part of the building into the future. It adds to the value of the building and to its function. Um, another great example is all the furniture designed and constructed for the library specifically for use in libraries. It makes perfect sense to maintain it at the Fogelson. It benefits the building. It uh, adds to its value, and so it's logical. Again, this is where it gets a little redundant. What we would do would be to go through these buildings, identify those assets, provide the steering committee a detailed inventory to review and approve. Once approved, we would develop a strategy to identify these um, items in the building, maybe a piece of colored tape as well as an inventory located inside of the front door of each building, identifying those items again to help preserve them in place so they don't get mixed up in any of the processes in the future. Again, I'm a little redundant. I apologize. Um, the third step after we've identified and secured those items would be to create a, another inventory of items that still have some economic value. Um, we would work with a local auctioneer probably to develop that list. Uh, we turn that inventory again over to the steering committee to approve. Once approved, we would work with that auctioneer, our purchasing office, our accounting office and the steering committee to hold a series of auctions, either physically on site or online um, to, to dispose of those. And then the fourth and final stage would be, you know, kind of final disposal of assets. These would be the things um, remaining that have very little to no economic value. Um, again, create an inventory, get the steering committee to approve it. And then there'd probably be a couple of steps we go through. One would be to try and salvage any, you know, metal or other item that has a physical, just its uh, physical makeup has a value. And if we're not able to do that, those remaining items would, would end up uh, most likely being um, discarded as trash. And uh, so that kind of wraps up the more mundane um, FFNE process that we've outlined so far. I'll answer questions at the end, but at the moment, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Lambert to talk about his work on the art and cultural assets.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, I'm Rod Lambert. I'm the Assistant Director of the Arts and Culture Department. Um, go ahead, next slide, please, Sam. As a function of our department, we're responsible for all the policies and programs related to arts and culture. And um, also next slide, maybe, Sam. So then also as a part of our Culture Connects document, um, I think the most important thing to consider for this project specifically is that um, arts and culture assets belong to everyone and should be accessible to everyone. Um, and so um, go ahead, Sam, with the next slide. So in twenty ten, um, when the campus, uh, we were responsible, I guess, in the city, the Arts and Culture Department, at the time, the Arts Commission were identified as the ones with the expertise to be able to manage these specific art assets. And so as a result, we kind of approached the maintenance and verification and upkeep and uh, security of these items with kind of the, the three missions of remaining, the items remain within the geographic boundaries of the city of Santa Fe. They be accessible to the public and they be used for educational or research purposes. That was the intent of the collections when they were developed, and we would like to continue to follow those three ideals, which will be coming up throughout this presentation. Um, also, we um, did a final comprehensive inventory that includes all of these fine arts assets, but also um, next slide, please, Sam. There is art equipment as well. And so we did a, a separate, we had an existing inventory from the College of Santa Fe and we followed it. Then every couple of years, we would go and do an uh, check-in, make sure everything was there. Um, identify and kind of, um, I guess coalesce items together and try to make them more secure. And then we went in recently and did the same thing with this equipment. This equipment is similar to the equipment that Sam was discussing in the Legareto Building. There's all kinds of equipment that are specific to use for those buildings as a function of it being an educational campus. And so ideally, um, these items will be able to either be used in those buildings or in the future um, be able to be distributed to um, community organizations, um, educational organizations for use in the community. Next slide, please. Um, the examples of current art assets that um, have been not necessarily redistributed, but um, distributed into the community are the um, monotypes that currently um, decorate the walls in your council chambers in which you sit. Those all came from the collection. They were selected and framed and placed in there to enhance the aesthetic, you know, I, concept of the chambers and then also to let the community enjoy them. Um, there are pottery wheels and pottery racks that IAIA, the Institute of American Indian Arts needed for um, their classrooms. They had more students than wheels. And so we organized a donation agreement through them. Um, there's the Beaumont New Hall Library Collection, which is focused specifically on photography, not only famous photographers, but photography techniques and methods. And it was developed by Beaumont New Hall and donated to the University of Art and Design. And the New Mexico Art Museum is currently, we're in process of doing a long-term loan with them. I think we're at the end of that contract, and I think, fingers crossed, it'll be in their possession soon. Um, there was some photography equipment. Um, David Scheinbaum, who helps develop the photography collection, as well as the Marion Center Photography Program, he recommended, we're doing uh, for economic development purposes, we've set up a photo lab during the um, quarantine um, to have artists be able to come in and use our equipment to photograph their artwork and develop portfolios. We find that one of the most um, common stopping points and hurdles for artists entering the market is not having images of their work. So we want to help them be able to do that. Um, they're teaching pianos and community and youth services, and there are three um, South American fiber arts weavings that we actually were concerned about being um, left around just in case they get damaged in some way. So we had them professionally cleaned and um, they have been placed behind Plexi in um, the Community Convention Center, and they're on display for the public there. Next slide, please. Um, so our recommendations, again, I'll bring them, the three, our focus is on remaining assets be kept within the Santa Fe geographic area, they be used for educational research purposes, and they're accessible to the public. So our recommendations are kind of based upon, again, that vision and those um, mission statements. So, next slide, please. So for the equipment, I, I mentioned it earlier. If the equipment is going to be used for the purpose of that building and the new occupants will need it and utilize them, but then by all means, we recommend that they stay in that building for that specific use. However, if that occupation changes, um, we would love to be able to distribute these assets to primarily educational or institutions, but possibly nonprofits, local colleges, um, other such locations where they can be utilized by the public. Um, next step, our next slide. And then for the art assets, um, we have been constantly kind of getting them secured and getting them fully identified and photographed and just confirming the inventory that we received from the College of Santa Fe. So currently, we're just wanting to either have them distributed, if they're not going to be used, have them distributed to local um, museums or other arts organizations for their future use. Um, and that could be a single organization, but we project, I think, with our relationships that we've already established, that it could be broken up into smaller parts. Next slide, please. So the, a priority on the campus is the trohe, and this is a wooden structure that's been weathered in the harsh conditions of Santa Fe and New Mexico. And so it's recommended that some, we have a museum that may be interested, and we would like to have it um, deconstructed and then reconstructed onsite by a professional. deconstructed and then reconstructed onsite by a professional. That would be our probably first project that we'd like to deal with. Um, next slide, please. And then there's a path forward for kind of every specific collection has its own limits and its own benefits. Um, and that they would deal with different organizations. Some are not necessarily fully ready to be moved, they might not be museum-ready. Um, there are others that are in perfect condition, and the inventory is thorough, and there's photographs of everything. And we know that they're museum-ready. So all of these are among them, and then next slide, please, Sam, there's more. So then the sculptures and the monotypes. Um, next slide. And then we're considering a two-phase approach, because we are proposing generally a year for phase one. We would propose, like, if approved eventually, it would probably start in December and run through December of 2022. And that's kind of an initial $100,000. Um, again, we have an expertise in the arts, but we're not necessarily museum experts. And so as a function of the these phases, we would need to bring in experts that are museum experts and collections experts. Um, IAIA Museum has a museum studies collection, and they would be able, that the museum studies program, and they would be able to, we're hoping to leverage their students to be able to give them a hands-on encounter with the collection and be able to have them help us. So there would be a team of conservators and a cultural asset manager for phase one to kind of get everything up to museum standards as far as packing and ability to move, but also kind of um, itemization and the formalization of all of that. And then slide, please. Phase two would be a $250,000 phase, which would be a more involved and involve um, possible contractors. We've worked, been working with Level, for example, on the current, but um, Beaumont New Hall Collection, and they are art packing and moving experts, and they work for the state museums. And so we've hired them to help us with that project. We assume they would be a vital asset for us to be able to contract to help us with the movement. We have partnerships with all of our arts organizations in town. So any of those that would possibly be receiving these items would be um, probably active partners, and I presume would be able to help share expenses. So I think that number um, could be changed depending upon the partnerships that we develop. Next slide. Um, so over the, in 2018, and then the couple of years before, we've been consolidating everything into very secure locations, and everything has been pretty itemized. Um, so um, we have some other work that's not been identified in the formal initial inventory. It's student work, it's other things that were donated that weren't considered high art um, and or visual art necessarily. So we need to kind of remove the wheat from the chaff, for lack of a better term, to be able to make sure that, you know, those items maybe separate them out from the others and then be able to move forward. Next slide, please. In closing, I'd like to say that there isn't an insurance, an insured value for the art collection on the campus. However, it's important to note that the true value of the collection, the collections are essentially the fact that they are from New Mexico, they are from Santa Fe, and what their aggregation means. Um, it's very similar to all the artifacts that are in the African American History Museum, Smithsonian um, Museum, that all those items on their own and their desperate disparate locations were not necessarily worth anything. But once they were assembled into a museum structure with some kind of um, contextualization, that's when the real value came. So uh, that's kind of how I want to, everyone to be thinking about these collections. There isn't an intrinsic necessarily value in the pieces themselves, it's their role as individual collections. So, any questions?
Thank you. Um, questions from the governing body, Councilor V. Hill Coppler?
Thank you, I I wanted to commend the staff that put this together. It was, it, we got uh, this presentation during, today at at 11:00 or so during the Economic Development Advisory Committee. And maybe it's the hour of the day, but I'll tell you, that was a really good presentation uh, that we had. We had a really good lively discussion. Uh, the committee, I think, was very impressed with the work that you did. Uh, one of the things that came out of this, uh, well, of course, we had the the actual attachment at our meeting, which was, we were able to scroll through, but uh, some of the comments by the committee are that, uh, well, and and some of the discussion that went on during questioning was, what do we do with some of these items, and how can we put them to best use for the community? And I don't know if you said this tonight, but one of the examples that was related was there's, there's a piano somewhere, and and uh, there was discussion about putting the piano somewhere in community services. And one of the committee members mentioned how wonderful that would be because, and I think it was with somewhere in the youth section, but what a wonderful impact that could make on somebody's life, where you're, you're running around and you you have this piano, and it maybe uh, provides you with an opportunity to get interested in piano, or if you know how to play the piano, just how neat that kind of thing would be. And while this comment is, it's kind of a small thing in the, in the whole big picture, it's, it lent itself to the idea that we have so many treasures here that if we can put them to good use in our city, in the, in the different organizations that we have, what a wonderful benefit it it can have on someone's life or a group, a group's life. And and we, and I believe you all talked about some of the donations that you can make. And uh, a comment was made by Mr. Fines about investigating donation versus having an auction, and whether or not there would be a better tax credit that way. Uh, I know, I think you didn't go over the auction idea tonight, but in case that was missed, uh, there is an idea there. And uh, you all, with regard to the piano, we, you talked about uh, you know, perhaps brainstorming with the engagement, public engagement that will go on with what to do with these collections, and that uh, you know, no idea is a bad idea. Sometimes you have little victories, such as the, the piano idea. And so uh, bringing up everything and then deciding that maybe there's more to it that we can do uh, for our community with these treasures that we have. Um, and then another comment was made about watching the funds where uh, you know, the the last report that was given spoke to the funds. Uh, pretty soon, though, the $200,000 could turn into a great deal of money. And so uh, the Economic Development Advisory Committee was uh, cautioning about being sure to watch the funds. But overall, I just want to give you all uh, great thanks for this report. It was, it was really very interesting, not that it's not tonight, but uh, it it really, I I really liked it. And I think the committee enjoyed looking at everything that, all of the ideas and everything that that you all presented. Uh, I do know there's a hundred-page list of inventory out there. I I believe I have that. And and so there's so many things, I don't even know how you're gonna get all this figured out. But there's, there's a lot of opportunity there for uh, really bringing some really good uh, value to our community. And and I'm really excited about this. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Counselor Mayor Worth, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm just curious, so in a number of those slides, you said there would be a budget request for a particular amount of money. And I'm, I'm just curious, uh, when is that budget request going to be made? Is it something that you're thinking is, uh, as, as our revenues uh, continue to recover? That we prioritize this in that next, as as Director Brown likes to say, tranche of money? Um, or uh, are you thinking already to uh, our next budgeting cycle next year?
Um, Rich, if if I may, um, Mr. Mayor, uh, Counselor, uh, our plan at the moment is a tentative plan, and we're focused on uh, the mid-year budget um, season, waiting to see what happens with GRT, allowing us some more time on the ground to kind of wrap our heads around the processes that we're gonna have to take on. And so that gives us time to plan and prepare, and also kind of wait and see how the financial recovery goes before we make a request. Ideally, it will be that, that, at that time, and if need be, we would push it off till the next budget cycle.
Okay, thank you, just curious. Thank you, Mayor.
I have a, I have a quick um, procedural question. Um, I think there is a remarkable uh, universe of assets uh, on the campus that you've identified. And there is a insatiable demand in our community for many of those assets to be redeployed. Uh, going forward, if I'm a nonprofit organization and I wanted to apply to get access to or use of, let's say, some of the uh, ceramics or pottery equipment, uh, what, what do you imagine is a reasonable and fair uh, process for people applying to get access to that equipment? Uh, so it doesn't simply sit there dormant uh, for a long time, nor do we sell it off where people could use it productively in our own community?
Um, Mr. Mayor, uh, I I can't speak to nonprofit entities. I do know that with educational or government entities, we're able to provide direct donations. Um, it requires a a limited amount of paperwork, it's fairly straightforward and painless. I would defer to the city attorney, um, or our accounting office on the ability to make donations directly to nonprofit entities. Beyond that, any transfer of goods or services that the city may provide, were required by state law to obtain fair market value for any good or service. So um, the kind of legit, basic logistics for you there, and I would defer to Ms. McSherry uh, for more information.
And Mayor Weber, counselors, I think Sam uh, provided a lot of great information. Um, one thing I would add is that if we wanted a nonprofit to provide a service to the community, we could do some sort of a competitive relationship for that service using perhaps the materials that have been um, presented tonight.
And Sam, just, this may be way premature, uh, well, it clearly is way premature. But as you think about it, would you simply do a first-come, first-serve uh, opportunity? Would you create a, a series of buckets that organizations could be aware of what might become available for that kind of a uh, relationship that the city attorney identified? Yeah, I, this is something that's gonna take some more work, but I, I believe we have a lot of people who are already queuing up to say we could make good use of asset X or Y. And we do want to be fair, and we do want to allow folks to have an equal shot at the use of that equipment. But we also would, I personally think, uh, if we can get it out of mothballs and into service, it's a really desirable outcome.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would absolutely defer to Ms. Kamiyama and Mr. Lambert on that. They're really experts on the subject matter. I think they really have a good grasp of how these assets could benefit the community. And I think uh, we're in good hands with uh, kind of their leadership on that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, city counselors, um, and to City Attorney McSherry's point, that it would be a competitive process, but we would do so in a way that it's not first-come, first-served, because that's not an equitable process. Um, so we would look at what equipment is available, look at the proposals of how those would be used, how accessible it would be for the community to use, and then be able to have values put on it um, for a panel to there for access. So we would follow that type of process.
Thank you, that sounds terrific. Uh, Robert, did you want to get into the?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and the, and the council. Uh, I would also like to add that there's a certain degree, as far as the art assets are concerned, um, museums, um, we currently don't have the conditions ourselves for climate control, temperature control, and all the other standards that are required to maintain art assets. I think they're fine in their temporary, short-term placement, but in the long term, those criteria would probably have to be among the most basic criteria to be met for organizations to end up being able to take possession, whether that be donation or long-term loan of any um, visual arts assets. I think the equipment assets are a completely different question, however, and we can set up criteria for that as well.
Thank you, terrific. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, excellent job, we much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, that takes us to item 13 on the agenda for folks who are following this, which is Matters from the City Manager.
Members of the governing body, um, I, if you will just allow me, I have two quick um, items to provide you an update on. The first uh, is the affordable, is affordable housing. I sent an email last night uh, to follow up on some of the action items from the Housing Funding Plan Resolution. Uh, as a reminder, this was a resolution that was approved on April 28th, and in that were a number of items uh, in which uh, city manager was directed to create a work plan for staff support, um, specifically around committee review and participation. So um, in the email I sent last night, there is a draft schedule of committee referrals. Uh, this will be a discussion item at the June 30th City Council Meeting. So if you will, please take a look. Um, in there are a lot of documents, including uh, all the reports that were utilized. Um, so I wanted to give you enough, um, lots of time to look at it. It will be a public discussion item at the June 30th Governing Body Meeting, um, and we will continue to work on the work plan. So just wanted to um, draw your awareness to that. And if you have um, edits ahead of time, uh, more than happy to take them. Um, and again, that will be a discussion item on June 30th. And then I just wanted to take a second to uh, give you a brief uh, an ongoing update um, about our uh, our reentry reopening plan. Um, as we discussed in our special meeting, um, that got us to, to this hybrid model, um, we are focused on a phased reentry plan for the city of Santa Fe. Um, as you know, most of our, many of our operations have been working onsite throughout the pandemic. Um, and so we are, for those staff who haven't been in their offices, we are focused on a phased reentry. Again, the, the, in the, um, I've been in contact, in communication with the county, state personnel, um, as all operations of various different sizes are grappling with how to bring their employees back safely, um, while maintaining some of the productivity we've gotten accustomed to with uh, with Zoom meetings um, and and hybrid meetings. So we've been meeting with department directors to set a date for their department, uh, for their staff to return. Each department is completing an IT audit to make sure that all technology is up to date for those who haven't been in their offices, and a building assessment to make sure that all workspaces are safe for the employees to return. Uh, we are then setting that date uh, after, once those two items are complete. Uh, as you all know, we've announced the libraries are open July 7th. All of our rec centers are open, um, and will remain with their current hours for now. At this time, with the additional COVID cleaning and monitoring protocols that are in place, which are a priority and will remain a priority, uh, those hours are gonna remain the same for now. Um, those COVID protocols are staff-intensive, um, and so we aren't in a position at this point to extend hours. Uh, it is always our hope to extend hours, uh, as we have the staffing to do so. Um, but I did want to draw that connection to maintaining um, our COVID safe practices as we open. Um, and uh, we are working to open City Hall to the public. Uh, we are, the goal is uh, that towards the end of the month. Um, but again, a specific date will be set once we've completed that IT audit and building assessment for each of the departments that are housed in City Hall. Um, so I just, I I know it feels, uh, there's a lot of moving pieces. Um, I'm really proud of our phased-in approach. I think it acknowledges the hard year uh, that everyone has been in. We've got people who've been working every day uh, since the beginning in their office uh, on, on, onsite. We've got some that that haven't. And so really trying to meet the moment, meet our, meet our employees where they are, um, and have a phased-in approach is uh, really our intention. So I'm grateful for the patience, um, and for the resilience we've seen. And um, with that, I will uh, yield my time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, the city attorney would take us into executive session, we've moved that to the end of tonight. So I'll uh, in, jump over that and instead uh, ask the city clerk if she has any matters she wishes to call to our attention tonight.
Mayor, governing body, thank you. Um, I really just have one quick note about the hybrid model. I really want to thank, you know, uh, Joe Beta, who has been the lead on implementing the technology that's allowed this two-way communication seamlessly in the chambers. Uh, it's been a very exciting few weeks as we've amped up for this. And I really just want to acknowledge all of his hard work, and really all of the staff that's helped us test, who's jumped on Zoom meetings, um, as we've really navigated through this. And of course, I absolutely want to acknowledge the Facilities Division. Um, they were really helpful. They were really helpful with test models for the Plexiglas, the additional filters, and then will be instrumental in the disinfectant process after we are, after the meeting is over. I also just really want to thank the governing body for feedback. And as we've navigated this, it's, it's definitely been exciting, and I look forward to additional feedback as we move to the end of the month meeting. So Mayor, that's all I really wanted to say is just thank you to everyone for making this happen. It feels really, I remember the first hybrid meeting we had when we went home, and this feels much better. So that is all I have at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Since we're moving forward, we have not, with not an executive session, we move to communications from the governing body at this time. Counselor Cassett, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm really excited to be back here. I just, I have to say, I was, I was talking to a friend today about how many governing body meetings I've actually been to in person. And I think this might be like the fifth one that I've, you know, been a governing body member and, and actually been here. So it's really exciting to be back here with all of you and to see everybody. I look forward to when we can slowly keep opening the doors to more individuals. I, I feel like I do this all the time, but they constantly deserve recognition. I need to recognize the library and another wonderful program that they brought out this weekend. They had a read to a horse program, read to a, a mini horse. There wasn't a lot of reading that was happening, but there was a lot of meeting of the horses. I don't remember both their names, but one was named Hot Dog. And the kids were just so excited and there were so many people there and they were able to pet the horses. And again, just these opportunities for our kids and our families to come back out into the world and start doing things again was really wonderful. So thank you so much again to the library staff. I have constantly been blown away by the work that they have done throughout this pandemic, the value that they've added to the community and, and allowing to, you know, continue with the joy. It's, it's been a tough year. So really having everybody there was, was wonderful. I don't believe I have anything else tonight.
Thank you, Council. Counselor Garcia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick announcements. First, BPAC is recruiting for members. I know the deadline is tomorrow, just dependent on how the outcome is, we might need to extend it. We do have vacancies in districts three and four. So please, if you know anybody in district four, push them our way. Those folks that are in those roles are moving on to rider pastures. Want to give a quick shout out to traffic operation manager, Jose Lerma. The constituent reached out to us, letting us know that he, and I'm going to quote what, what they said, that this was the nicest and most professional city employee who I ever interacted with, and I thought you should know of his excellent customer service. He listened to my concerns, asked questions, and then took immediate action to begin to resolve the situation and gave me the information that I needed to understand what the timeline for the city, the state seems to be. So shout out to Jose for his work and, and helping out in that. And then you guys probably have seen me wearing a mask. I've got a vulnerable person at home. It's a good happiness. We're expecting a little boy. So I'm sorry, it's, it's, it's exciting. And I'm doing so because my daughter would probably scold me if she saw me maskless just because she's got it ingrained in her, wear your mask inside. So yeah, nothing else, Mr. Mayor.
Congratulations, Counselor, and to your whole family. Counselor, let's see, Ramiroth, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. It's good to be back and thank you for everybody who worked hard to make this happen. I, I think it has gone quite well, and we've transitioned from being able to talk in the chambers to the people who are on screen. So doesn't without seemingly a glitch. So that's, that's great. So congratulations. Thank you for all the work. And that's really all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Viallo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's nice to see you all not on a virtual block box. And it's a little awkward, I have to say, to like try to talk in these weird spaces with these fake walls. So just wanted to, but I did, I do want to thank staff for putting the effort to make it safe. And I think we'll just adjust accordingly, but you know, it takes some time. So I also want to congratulate my colleague with the addition, soon to be addition to, to his family, Counselor Garcia, thanks for sharing that. I think that's exciting and I'm happy for you and your family. I also wanted to just recognize since our next meeting is at the end of June, an important date that we haven't celebrated in a, in a big way in Santa Fe as a city, and that's Juneteenth, June 19th, also known as Freedom Day, Liberation Day, Emancipation Day. And it's a holiday commemorating the end of slavery in the U.S. And while this holiday is, you know, commemorating the end of slavery, it's also thinking or addressing and reflecting on past suffering and the historic and contemporary stains that we have in our country, whether it was related to Jim Crow laws, segregation in schools, the rise of mass incarceration, or the ongoing traumatic experiences that black people experience with state sanctioned violence or racial profiling. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that and recognize that. And the way I think our community will be able to recognize it, and it's the first time ever that this will be celebrated on the plaza, is there will be a Juneteenth celebration on June 19th, this, on a Saturday. It's being put on by AMP, AMP concerts in partnership with Rashana Maad. And so I just wanted to thank the folks that are going to be part of that community event, and I encourage all of us to go. It's not a city event. I just think it's important to acknowledge our community members, our Black and African American community that have contributed historically to New Mexico and Santa Fe and continue to do so. And so being able to have that space is extremely important. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that since there wasn't enough time to put a resolution forth. And so I just wanted to encourage the community and Santa Fe and my colleagues to attend that event. It's in the evening and it's the first concert, well, it's the first event that will be part of the concert series on the plaza. So it's pretty exciting, I think. So thank you for that space to share that, and I hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Abeta.
Thank you, Mayor. This is for the city manager. As you begin to transition employees back into city hall, I would hope that we take into account those that have children and how difficult it may be to find them childcare in the month of July for one month. School starts the first week of August. So if there's any way, maybe some of those could continue to, it might be easier for our families if they continue to work remotely until the first week of August because not just from their perspective, but, but even the childcare provider perspective, it's not as easy as just, we'll just take a bunch of more kids July 1st or whatever, because you have to staff up, you got to do background checks, you got to, and you really won't be ready to take on more kids for the rest of the summer. So if you can just take that into consideration for our employees who have children, it might be easier for them or less disruptive if they don't come back fully until school starts in the first week of August. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Vialcopler, you have the floor.
Thank you. I wanted to mention that there was a really nice event which was attended by the mayor and Counselor Cassett. That's right. And this was put on by the soccer community and their sponsors and the United Soccer Team out of Albuquerque put on a really nice show. There were a lot of our youth there that it was really wonderful to see them so happy doing something that they really love. And what they did was they constructed a soccer field. I, I think it was a mini soccer field. It wasn't full size, but it was really very beautiful and it was behind Schellerberger Tennis Center. And it was just really a, a great, well-attended event by parents and children. And it was really, really great to see. It was also nice to have the United Soccer Team part, not the whole team, but a few of them participating in that. And big thanks to the sponsors who made that happen. Thanks to the fire chief and Station Seven for being a part of that, bringing the ladder truck with the giant flag. Everybody always loves seeing that. It's, it's very patriotic. Also, we had the family of Ron Shirley dedicate, well, no, actually dedicate and planned the event for the renaming of Alto Park to Ron Shirley Alto Park. It was a huge celebration planned by the family and of a lot of Santa Fe was there, Santa Fe people and former mayors and many, many former city employees, including the first female and only female fire chief, I mean, not fire chief, police chief drove here from Arizona to attend. And so there was a lot of familiar faces and it was very festive. Thank you, thank you to the Shirley family for putting that on. Lastly, I would like to read into the record legislation, a resolution supporting the 10th Annual Neighbor to Neighbor Fund Drive. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I want to second Counselor Vialcopler's comments about the soccer event last night. It was tremendous fun and to see so many families there with kids of all ages and boys and girls alike, moms and dads on a, a smaller than full-size soccer pitch, but a, but a good one. And we're, I, I had the great fun of being, as you were, Counselor, on the pitch. And it was my second pitch because previously I threw out the first pitch for the Fuego game. So I went from a baseball pitch to a soccer pitch, and it's part of what's happening right now in Santa Fe. We are opening up. We're seeing people come out. We're having fun. The spirit is very, very high and positive. And I, I want to thank everybody who is making it happen. The Fuego, the Parks Team, the, all of the volunteers, the nonprofits. There is a tremendous sense of opening all over town, and, and it's, it's a celebration. I have two items I'm introducing tonight. One is a resolution relating to income disparity and inequity, authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding with the mayors for a guaranteed income in the Santa Fe Community College to assist with launching a pilot project to support young parents enrolled at Santa Fe Community College and to build support for a guaranteed income in the city of Santa Fe. This is a program that makes us a part of cities around the country where we provide a stipend. In this case, it'll be 100 families where they are both raising families and attending the community college and will provide a guaranteed income to help them secure the ability to both educate themselves and keep their families safe and on a secure basis. And we'll talk about it more at another time, but it is a significant commitment to help families get both educated and maintain their family security. Secondly, a resolution donating property identified as 635 Alto Street and resources to a developer certified as a qualifying grantee under the New Mexico Affordable Housing Act for development of at least five low-priced dwelling units. This is a step as we use our city resources, our land to provide infill housing that will be absolutely affordable, using our ownership of the land as a contribution to driving down the cost of development and making the units affordable. And that, on that one, I am co-sponsor, I'm happy to have two co-sponsors at this moment in Counselors Vialcopler and Counselor Ramiroth. And I see Counselor Lindell has rejoined us just in time for the communications from the governing body.
Thank you, Mayor. It's June, so it's Pride Month. And I hope that everyone will participate in Pride Parade. It's on June 26th. I'd like to personally thank Kevin Bowen from the Human Rights Alliance for all that he's done, the work that he's done, and all the other things he's done for the community in taking over the presidency of the Human Rights Alliance. I would just ask everybody during that pride celebration, and it is a celebration, that at one point in time in my lifetime, pride parades weren't quite the joyous, festive events that they are now. They're, they're pretty scary. We felt obligated that it was the right thing for us to do. And I would just ask that when you participate in any of the pride events, that you just take a moment to reflect. How far we come sometimes in such a short amount of time, but that we still have a pretty long way to go. There's activity in the country at this point in time to erode the rights that we fought very, very hard for. And I hope that you will stand with me in affirming those rights and making your voice heard. So see it, pride, it'll be a lot of fun, but take a moment to know that it didn't just happen. We stand on the shoulders of a lot of different people. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. At a quarter to eight, we have completed our four o'clock session. I would propose, I know that our folks are waiting for the evening session, but most of you all haven't gotten up and stretched once since we started. I think we should take a good 10 minutes to stretch, rejuvenate, get a drink of water, and then we'll resume in 10 minutes back here in the chambers. And we will ask the forbearance of everybody who's waiting for evening session. We'll get back in 10 minutes. Thank you. We'll get back in 10 minutes. Thank you. I wonder, uh, because we're not all in the same room, is the city attorney, city manager, city clerk all present for us to get back to business? We're all present and accounted for. And Counselor Lindell, are you on Zoom with us, back with us? There you are. All right. With that then, let's uh, resume uh, our, our agenda and we will begin. It's eight o'clock. To those who were hoping to be on the six o'clock session, thank you for your patience. Uh, we'll begin with petitions from the floor. I, uh, at this point, since we're now hybrid, I don't know how many people we have in the uh, in the waiting room who wish to speak. Uh, why don't we, uh, Madam Clerk, why don't you ask? Uh, we, we also have a full uh, slate of public hearings. If you're here to speak for the, any of the public hearings, please wait for that. If you have a petition from the floor for, right now, please raise your hand and the city clerk will let you in to the meeting and will provide uh, two minutes for you to speak to the council.
Hi, Mayor. Uh, we did have Stephanie Benanato, um, and she had her hand raised. However, she just disappeared. Uh, so I'm going to see if she rejoins the meeting. Um, she had her hand raised. We also have one other individual in the waiting room, however, his hand is not up. It's Mr. Mike Hereda, so I can verify um, that he's here to speak for petitions from the floor. Hold on one moment. Can you hear me? Yes.
Okay, it's one of the public hearing items.
Okay, then at this time, um, we're only hearing petitions from the floor, but when we have the item up that you're here to discuss, then I'll unmute you again, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Hereda.
Has, has Ms. Benanato rejoined us?
Yes, Mayor, she did, so I'm going to go ahead and allow her. Um, Ms. Benanato, I've unmuted your microphone.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, speak up a little bit, please.
Okay, I was having a lot of feedback, like uh, it was really weird. It was like in the time machine where I was hearing two things that had been, one had been said and one was being said in the meeting. So I had to leave and come back. Anyway, um, I wanted to point out that there is a kiddie pool at Chavez. It's rather large. Um, it could accommodate easily 10 kids and still have some separation. Um, if you really want more lifeguards, you just don't go, where are the lifeguards? You actually pay them $18 an hour, which is what the competitive rate is. Um, and then you might be able to actually um, be able to more fully staff um, these recreational facilities. And again, uh, when you have the therapy pool, the therapy pool is not the kiddie pool, although the kiddie pool has been used for therapy at points. Um, so they're two separate places and there's only four lanes in the therapy pool currently. So you have two hours a day, there being, the main pool is shut down for basically four lanes. Um, the other thing is I'd like to invite you to come to the Plaza sometime or just on Sandoval at El Dorado Hotel or over there on um, Grant by the Presbyterian Church or, or maybe over there by City Hall. Come around 7:30 on a Sunday night or maybe even on a, a Thursday night and hear what it sounds like to be at the Plaza. Uh, motorcycles, uh, trucks, cars, it's extremely loud. And I, I don't know really what you can do about it, but um, it's not exactly making the Plaza a pleasant and welcoming space. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's the only uh, person from petitions from the floor. Uh, if I'm correct, Madam Clerk, could you move? We have uh, appointments to the youth, mayor's youth advisory board and uh, we'll ask uh, Counselor Cassidy to speak to that before we, why don't we get a, a motion and then we'll uh, ask you to speak to it?
Move to approve.
Can we have a motion? We have a second. Uh, Counselor Cassidy, you are the liaison. Do you want to address the nominees?
Yes, absolutely. So um, I do apologize, we were a little bit late in getting the um, choices to the governing body. Um, we had seven individuals apply. We had five individuals who made it to the interviews. Um, just in general, hold on, okay. Let's speak about the mayor's youth advisory board and the current people that are, are serving on this. And these group of young adults, because they really do act like young adults, are some of the most incredible people that I have had the honor to engage with. Um, their passion, their interest in the community and all of the different ways that they contribute continually blows me away. Every time I get off this meeting, I feel so inspired and hopeful for the future um, and really even for the present and, and the work that this group is going to be able to do. Um, we had two openings for members as well as three alternates and we wound up interviewing five individuals. So everybody that we interviewed, um, we were fortunate that we were able to offer them a space. Um, so our two new members um, will be filled by Jose Escaval and Lila Chang. And then the alternates are Jason Bowen, Thomas Haikero, I hope I did not completely butcher that last name, and Ziarra Escaval. Um, some of these individuals are, are really young, uh, 12, I believe, 12 or 13. Some of these individuals are really young, 12, I believe, 12 or 13. So having them join now and really hopefully we'll have the opportunity to watch them grow over the years is very exciting. They are going to be doing some work on the Midtown Campus and some of the community engagement, really talking to youth. We are going to be working with Councilor Beta and the Boys and Girls Club on the teen center and getting some feedback on really what type of programming they would like to be seeing there, as well as addressing some of the larger issues that we're seeing in the community and some of the larger issues that we're seeing with substance abuse. This is something the mayor and I have talked about extensively and that my app is very interested in exploring mental health, violence among youth. So really just a very passionate, intelligent, creative group of individuals that, as you can see, if you gave me 45 minutes, I would sit here and wax poetic about them the entire time. So if anybody ever wants to just come and be a guest at our meetings and watch these kids in action, please do. It's really, it's extremely enlightening and encouraging. So thank you for letting me take some time to, to speak to these amazing individuals. I'm really just so impressed with them all the time.
Thank you. Questions about the nominees? If not, there's a motion, could the clerk please call the roll?
I can. Mayor, however, I was unable to hear who made the motion in the second on this item. Can you recap for me, please?
Counselor Cassidy made the motion. Counselor Romero Worth seconded the motion.
All right, perfect, thank you. With that, Counselor Cassidy?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Romero Worth?
Yes, sorry, was taken aback by Counselor Lindell from the heavens.
Counselor V. Hill Copley?
Yes.
Councilwoman V. Real?
Yes.
Counselor Beta?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
Thank you and thank you, Counselor Cassidy, for your fine work in bringing these nominees forward. Great to. Madam Clerk, let's go to item 21A, please.
Yes, item 21A is consideration of bill number 2021-11. It's adoption of an ordinance regarding the Independent Salary Commission, amending section 6-19.3 SFCC 1987 to reassign the authority to appoint the members of the commission to the Ethics and Campaign Review Board and to reassign the authority to appoint the commission's chairperson to the commission's members and amending section 6-16.2 SFCC to add the duty of appointing the Independent Salary Commission members to the Ethics and Campaign Review Board's powers and duties. This is sponsored by Counselor Garcia and Counselor Lindell and Jesse Ginn, our legislative liaison, is available for this item.
This is a public hearing. So let's, I think, begin, yes, Counselor V. Hill Copley, you have the floor.
Mayor, I believe I've recused or excused myself from this item before.
You and I both did. I don't know that, given that this is a, well, let's turn to our city attorney for guidance, because you and I both were very clear that we did not want to get entangled on anything that might affect us directly. But Madam City Attorney, would it be advised for Counselor V. Hill Copley and I to step aside while this is under consideration?
Mayor Weber, Counselor V. Hill Copley, the one thing that has changed since the last time is that we have now changed the schedule. So this new change would not impact the next mayor who is elected. So if either of you plans to run for reelection, you certainly should recuse yourself or if you, if you already know, but that's probably unlikely, or plans to run again in four years.
I plan to run.
Okay, so that might be a good idea if that's the case.
Counselor V. Hill Copley just threw her hat in the ring.
Well, Mayor Weber, Counselor V. Hill Copley, I would advise against that because I think there's other things that would be triggered as well for that. It's probably a little bit early, but I guess if you want to have a total separation and to eliminate any perception of influence on that, then certainly recuse yourself. But there is a difference now from before, which is that we changed the schedule. So previously, we hadn't adopted that ordinance change.
Okay, then I'm good.
Thank you for raising it. Appreciate it. So we're, we are, I think, going to be in a position where we can participate in as much as the schedule has changed. So with that, I think we, let's entertain an overview. Jesse, if you'd like to provide it, then we'll ask the sponsors if they want to speak to it, take testimony, entertain a motion and go from there.
Mayor, I do just want to note that we do have one individual with his hand raised for the public comment.
Okay.
Public hearing.
So when the, here, when the time comes for public participation, we'll give that individual a chance to speak.
Yes.
Jesse?
Thank you, Mayor, councilors. The memo, I think, goes over what this is. It's, I think it's fairly straightforward. When the Independent Salary Commission was established in 2016, provided for the position of mayor to appoint the members of the Salary Commission, the bill removes that authority from the mayor and instead places it under the Ethics and Campaign Review Board. So that's just a bit, if there, I can answer any questions after the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I'll turn to the sponsors if they'd like to make remarks at this time about the, about the ordinance and context and purpose. Counselor Garcia, would you like to speak to this?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing much to add besides what Mr. Ginn said. Just want to remind folks, this is not, the Independent Salary Commission members will be appointed by the Ethics Campaign Review Board and the Ethics Campaign Review Board won't be depending the salary. I think there might have been some confusion, so they're just going to be the individuals that are making the appointment and then that new body will determine that potential salary. No other comments, Mr. Mayor. I'll hand it off to my co-sponsor, Counselor Lindell.
Counselor Lindell, do you want to address your, your?
From my heavenly perch here. Yeah, I want to thank Counselor Garcia and I think that we ended up with a better product than when, what we started with. And took a little work, but I think this is a much better process and it'll feel fair to hopefully everyone. And, you know, we just kind of did the work that we needed to do to get here. So thank you, Counselor Garcia, for working on it, for working with me on this. And I hope that we can go ahead and get this passed and get this work done.
Thank you, Counselor. Let's open it up to comment from the public and then we'll come back to the governing body. I, I understand, Madam Clerk, there's an individual whose hand is up. Let's give them two minutes to speak to the ordinance, if you could unmute them.
Yes. Mr. Hereda, your microphone is unmuted. I just want to verify that this is the public hearing you wish to speak to. Seems like, Mr. Hereda, your microphone has been unmuted. Mayor, well, that, oh, there you are. Okay, perfect, this is a public hearing, yes, for the Independent Salary Commission.
Okay, this is not the one that I'm waiting for. I'm waiting for the family variance issue. So if my hand was up prematurely, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Not a problem. I'll go ahead and mute.
We'll come back to you on that one. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to testify?
Yes, Mayor Weber, Stephanie Benanato has her hand. I will raise it and Stephanie, once you state your name and address, I will start the two minutes.
Stephanie Benanato, P.O., Box 1601, Santa Fe, New Mexico.
Stephanie, we can't hear you in the chamber, Stephanie. I don't know if you can get a better microphone or get closer.
Yeah, just, can you hear me now?
Little bit better. It's still a little weak signal.
Let me, let me plug in my headset, maybe that'll help.
Now we have you loud and clear. Thank you.
Oh, okay, so something happened. It just, I didn't plug it in and something just changed for the connection. So I guess my, I mean, I think this is a good idea that it's been removed from the mayor's appointment power, but I wonder how the ethics board is appointed in itself. And I know you can't totally remove political influence from a board, but again, I think it's just a question that might be of interest to the public to know how removed the ethics board is in terms of then their appointment for this salary committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the waiting room?
Nope, that was it, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a discussion from the governing body on this? Is, well, first of all, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second?
We have a motion to approve it from Councilwoman V. Real and a second from Counselor Cassidy. Discussion of the, of the motion or the substance of the bill. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor, I can. Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Romero Worth?
Yes.
Counselor V. Hill Copley?
Yes.
Councilwoman V. Real?
Yes, and I'd like to co-sponsor.
We'll add you as a co-sponsor. Counselor Beta?
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
Thank you. Could you take us to 21B then?
Yes.
Did Counselor Lindell vote on that? Did I miss her vote?
I voted.
Okay, thank you. You know, there is this invisibility factor that is really intimidating. 21B, please.
Yes, I completely understand. I'm used to being able to see each of your faces while you're voting, so I apologize when I'm not hearing some of the motions. But item 21B is consideration of bill 2021-13. It's adoption of an ordinance. It's sponsored by Counselor Beta, Counselor Lindell and Counselor Rivera. It's an ordinance amending subsection 14-3.7F, notes 15 and 16 of tables 14-7.2-1 and subsection 14-9.6B to allow the minimum lot size to be 1.25 acres for a lot created through the inheritance or family transfer subdivision and that results in only one additional lot, amending subsection 14-7.2B to require rounding down of the calculation of maximum number of dwelling units for a family transfer subdivision where neither public sewer nor public water are available and amending subsection 14-9.6A to require proof of adequate septic and well assurances prior to the approval of inheritance or family transfer subdivision that lacks public sewer and water. Eli Isaacson are planning and land use directors available for this item as well as Noah Burke.
Thank you. And this is also a public hearing, so we'll start with staff report. Will allow the sponsors, if they want to speak to it, a chance to address it, then go to public comment and then come back. Eli, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. I'm actually going to kick this over to Noah Burke. He's been leading the effort from the Landes Department on this, but I will be available for questions afterwards if you have any for me.
Noah, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Weber and members of the governing body. The proposal to, before you tonight, would amend the city's land development code in regards to family transfer lot splits. Currently, as the code regulations are written today, if an applicant wishes to split a lot that doesn't have access to city water or sewer, they would need a total of five acres to split it or more. And the minimum lot size at that point could be no less than 2.5 acres. This has proved to be a real barrier to many areas that were annexed into the city, which don't have access to the city utilities. Within the last few years, there have been several inquiries by families wishing to split their lots and give one to an immediate family member. Most of these requests have been in areas which don't have access to water and sewer and they don't have five or more acres to split. The proposed changes would allow such lots to be split into two lots with a minimum size of 1.25 acres each, if a well and septic permits can be obtained. And if the lot created by inheritance or family transfer in accordance with the applicable regulations of 14.3.7F, the proposed changes would only be for creating two new lots and transferring a lot or lots to his or her children, natural or adopted or grandchildren, or it is created by a person who has performed the function of a father, mother, grandfather or grandmother for the purposes of transferring a lot to a person for whom such person has performed that function, provided that the person proposing to create the subdivision and transfer the lot or lots files appropriate documentation of conveyance with an affidavit with the county clerk. There would still need to be adequate access and conformance with all other applicable chapter 14 regulations. There would also need to be provided assurances that appropriate state of New Mexico well and septic permits can be obtained for the newly created parcels. According to our staff analysis obtained by our city GIS, there are approximately 275 lots that are 2.5 acres or larger and don't have access to city water or sewer. Under our city code, section 14-3.3, the planning and land use department is required to review the proposed amendments to the text of chapter 14 to ensure compliance with the following criteria. One, that there's compliance with the law. Two, there's consistency with the general plan. Three, consistency with other policies adopted by the governing body. Four, consistencies with the purpose and intent of chapter 14 and the section being amended. Five, consideration of how the amendment relates to other provisions of the Santa Fe city code and the avoidance of unintended consequences. And finally, six, consistency with any approved neighborhood conservation overlays. Upon our review, staff has, staff has reviewed the proposals and the changes with regard to the criteria mentioned above and finds that the proposed text amendments meet the criteria. Therefore, staff recommends that the governing body approve the amendments as proposed to chapter 14 and adopt it. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the sponsors want to address this. Counselor Beta, you are one and Counselor Lindell is another. You may want to speak to the ordinance.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to, first of all, thank the planning commission and also the Public Works Committee. Both have recommended approval of the ordinance amendment. The, many of the properties that will be affected by this amendment were in the county and when they were in the county, they were allowed to do family transfers of one and a quarter. And when the city and, and the county came up with the annexation agreement, it was understood or at least at the time thought that, well, just because you're getting annexed into the city, we'll recognize whatever you could do when you're in the county, so you shouldn't be effective and I think, affected. And I think some properties did come in and in fact do family transfers under that agreement. And then at some point, there was a change in that and the city said, no, we're not going to do that. You need to comply with chapter 14. And a lot of the residences in these areas got, since they didn't annex, since they didn't do a family transfer before that determination was made, they got stuck not being able to give property to their children or grandchildren as a result of being in the city of Santa Fe now. And so that's the, the intent of the amendment is to allow family transfers to occur the way they were able to when they were in the county. Hopefully and ultimately, the city provides water and sewer to these areas and then it's not an issue as far as lot size and being on wells and septics. So that's the intent, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lindell?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that Counselor Beta completely covered why it came to be that we thought that this was the fair and right thing to do. So thank you, Counselor Beta, for working on this together. It seemed a little complicated at times, but we got it done and hopefully this will pass. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
And Mayor, I forgot to thank staff. Staff really got this moving for us a while back. Thank you, Mr. Burke and Mr. Isaacson. Thank you, Mr. Burke and Mr. Isaacson for the work you did on this.
Thank you, councillor. We do have someone who wishes to speak from the public, who's been waiting very patiently. Madam Clerk, do you want to let that individual speak to the governing body for two minutes on this item?
Yes, Mike Hedada. There you go.
There's more than one. There's probably at least one.
Yes, there is one. Mr. Hedada has now been unmuted and can speak to this.
Okay. Thank you. My name's Michael Herrera. I live at 5 Paseo de la Reyna on the south side of town, off of Nelson Road. I want to thank Mr. Mayor, councillors. I want to thank the council members and the city staff for their work, because I know it's a lot of work. I've been monitoring this ever since the beginning and learned quite a bit. But at the same time, I've been living through this for a long time as well. I have one recommendation and two clarifications that I will address here. First, the recommendation that I'm going to ask of the city is that we create a means to track these 275 lots, or how many people may be asking for the lot split through the family or inheritance, so that we could really determine how many people are actually wanting to split their lots. I don't think there's going to be a 275 lots. I think it'll be a lot less than that. But it would allow us to be able to determine the water and the sewer issue, which is the main reason why we were taking off the master plan of one-acre lot sizes, which is really the key to all of us being able to move forward with our properties, because that one-acre lot size allows us to, for the landowners, to determine how we want to split our properties, not the city council to say, you've got two and a half acres, therefore, we split it in half, and that's all there is to it. That one-acre lot size means a lot for individuals that have three acres, because when you split the three acres into the family variance, you really lose a lot of property that's not going to be used simply because of the restriction that we're given. So if we could create that database, maybe in five years, we could see how many people actually used it, because in five years, I will be back asking the city again for that one-acre lot size, because not everybody wants to split their property to their family. Some people want to split their family to their property to their friends or to another individual, not so much because they want to sell it to the individual, but they need that money for their personal gain, maybe taking the child to college or whatever it may be. So that's one thing that I'm recommending that the city might consider is track the data on this particular lots. Clarification, the second issue. The definition of family transfer is as such, and this is written in your laws, two or more natural persons related by blood, marriage, legal guardianship, or adoption, plus resident domestic servants. Resident domestic servants are considered family in your definition, and I don't know what that means, because we don't have servants where we live. So I don't know how that got there, but it's just, you know, when we're talking about the family variance, we even cut it deeper and said, you could only cut it for your children or grandchildren, which leaves family out of the picture, your brothers, your sisters, your uncle. You know, it really limits us to be able to do what we want with our property. It is our property. We own it, and we're trying to do the best thing we can for the people within our immediate connections. It might be a friend, it might be a family member, it might just be selling it for financial gain, but there's nothing wrong with that. The second thing, paragraph...
I just wanted to let you know, we do have a time limit, which you had...
I only have one more point.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, the last point is paragraph 14-9-6. Standards for inheritance or family transfer subdivision. It says, subparagraph B, "Density and district regulations. Density for newly annexed areas must conform to the density range provision set forth in the general plan." Well, the general plan was always one-acre lot size. So if we have two and a half acres, and we want to split it, we know that we could only split it once. It should be our discretion to be able to split it how we want to, so long as it stays within the one-acre lot size. It could be one, one and a half. That works better for us than saying, you've got to split it in half, and that's all there is. So that's all I had to say, and I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there another individual who wants to speak to this issue?
Yes, Ms. Stephanie Benanato would like to speak to this issue and has been unmuted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie Benanato, P.O. Box 1601, Santa Fe. You can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay, good. I am a little concerned about, I mean, I understand why this is happening. I hope that the city will, I think the database is a really good idea so that the city can know where development of sewer lines, et cetera, water needs to occur if there are clusters of these family transfer lot splits. I am really concerned about how well septic tanks work. And, you know, again, two and a half acres was considered minimum for septic. So I wonder if that, the effectiveness of septic systems can be addressed. And then the other thing that I wonder about is, so you've split this two and a half acres into 1.25 acres. Does that person also get to do an accessory dwelling unit there? Or are they going to be limited to a one residence until there is, you know, water and sewer infrastructure? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to testify on this matter?
No, Mayor. Those were the only two individuals.
Thank you. Come back to the governing body. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. Discussion among the, yes, Councillor V. Ho Copler, you have the floor.
Thank you. I wanted to ask first, what annexation are we speaking about on this? I mean, I don't really know exactly where this is.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councillor V. Ho Copler. In your packets, towards the end of the packet, I think it's page 17 of your packets, there's a map showing the distribution of these parcels through the city. The majority of them are in areas of the Phase 2 and Phase 3 annexations. As Councillor Abeta mentioned earlier, many of these parcels are in the Nelson Road area, in the southwest area of town. There's also a concentration of parcels in the area known as Coyote Ridge in District 1. There's also a concentration of parcels in the foothill areas of District 1 and District 2. However, due to the terrain management constraints of those lots, it's in my opinion that very few of those lots will actually be split for family transfer.
Okay, thank you. So we're really talking about several different parcels spread out around Santa Fe? Okay. And then the other question I have is, after the family lot split, what holds this to the family ownership into perpetuity? Or is that required?
Thank you, councillor, Mr. Mayor. So there's a three-year requirement that after the lot is split and transferred, it must be held by the receiving party, the receiving member of the family for three years, after which that the individual could choose to either keep the lot or sell it. So there is not a requirement that it's kept in the family for perpetuity.
Okay, thank you. So with regard to the public comment a while ago, they could split it into, you know, qualifying family members up to three years, and then if the city doesn't broaden its definition of family or disregard, you know, the language for family at all, that meaning take it out or revise it, then all we have is a three-year waiting period to sell it to whomever that person wants to.
Also, yes, I believe that is correct. This ordinance, these text amendments that we're discussing this evening, do not propose any changes either to our standard code definition of the term "family", nor does it make any changes to the duration of time by which a receiving family member must hold the new property that they have inherited.
So the bottom line is, do a family lot split, and then after three years, it just follows the normal path of transferring to anyone or selling it to anyone? And that's, that can happen?
That is correct. And that can happen with any lots, any family transfer of land in the city of Santa Fe, not just on these family transfer lot splits that we're talking about this evening.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Councillor Merriworth.
So, thank you, Mayor. Director Isaacson or Mr. Burke? So these properties don't have city sewer, city water, correct? And so they're already on wells and on septic?
That is correct. Thank you.
And so if they're split, we'd be doing another well and another septic?
Thank you for that question, councillor. Oftentimes, I believe, in thinking this through, many of these new lots, these newly created lots, will be able to share existing wells with the property that they were split from. So I don't know if it's completely accurate to assume that every lot split will result in an additional well. It most likely will result in a different septic system. However, our research has shown that, if properly sized, two residential units may feed into a single septic system, granted that the tanks and leach fields are appropriately sized to accommodate the additional unit.
Okay, and I was going to ask you another question. But you also said something about how it might, long-term, these areas might get connected to city sewer, city water. Did you say that?
That absolutely is the goal, councillor. I mean, I think our goal is to look at strategies and opportunities to provide infrastructure to these areas of the city. I mean, that was part of the understanding at the time of annexation, and it's something the city has not done yet. But I think the city would very much like to extend services to all areas of the city within city limits. And so in many ways, this is a temporary, you know, solution to this problem, because as we move forward with planning efforts, not just in land use, but in our utilities and public works departments, we hope to be able to extend services to these areas in a reasonable amount of time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes, Councillor V. Ho Copler, you have the floor.
Thank you. But with regard to the septic system, the Environmental Improvement Division requires that septic's undergo, upon transfer of ownership, that septic's undergo an inspection, and with that, they have to be re-permitted. And that process is very strict and does require certain feat and such, and drainage into leach fields. So I don't know. I've not heard of any properties sharing a septic system. So it would rather likely require a new one, and maybe even the current septic to be inspected. But that's not an issue. I guess that's why we have those laws. That's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments about the item in front of us and the motion? Councillor Villarreal?
Mr. Mayor, just wanted to, Herrera had asked about the definition of resident domestic servant. Staff elaborate on that?
Noah, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and Councillors, and Councillor Villarreal. So the definition that Mr. Herrera was referring to is the definition of family, and under the definition section. The reason we have a definition of family is because one of our ordinances actually says you can't have more than five individuals that are unrelated, living in a household. So we further defined that through putting "family". With regards to this ordinance, there is very specific language already written in the code, which I had kind of read off early and probably lost a lot of you, because it's a very jury kind of language. But it does actually define family. So that family definition that Mr. Herrera was referring to is pre-existing language that is already in the code in relation to kind of another ordinance, another place where we talk about family.
So what does resident domestic servant mean, then?
I would actually, Mayor and councillors, I'd actually have to look at what resident domestic servant means, because I've never actually had to apply it in my time with the city.
Councillor, I don't have the exact definition, but it sort of intuitively, I believe, it would be someone who lives with a family to provide domestic help or assistance, however, is not a true family member in the sense of being related either by blood or marriage. And so it's a sort of a, while it sounds to be a rather antiquated term, it is a sort of a living arrangement that is actually not too uncommon, I think, in our city, especially as we have older residents requiring live-in assistance to help them with their day-to-day life at home.
Do you think we need to refine that? Because servant sounds very antiquated.
It's probably definitely something worth taking with that, councillor.
So in this process, we wouldn't look at it now because it's not necessarily focused on that? But can we make sure as staff to think about a better definition of that? Not just definition, a term and a definition for it, so.
Absolutely.
Were there other questions that I was trying to? Mr. Herrera brought up about creating a means of tracking those lots that are eligible. So I'm not sure if he meant communicating with those folks, or I guess maybe you could tell me more about what you, how you interpreted that comment?
Thank you, councillor, Mr. Mayor. So my understanding of the comment was that Mr. Herrera would like the Land Use Department to keep track of how many of these 275-odd qualifying parcels, you know, the parcels that have neither access to water or sewer services that are larger than 2.5 acres in size, to track the number of those parcels that actually take advantage of this new provision to allow family transfer lot splits, resulting in lots no smaller than 1.25 acres. And that's something we could do fairly easily with the Land Use Department if Mr. Herrera wanted to come back in five years, as he said, to see how many properties have actually taken advantage of this new program. We certainly could give him that information, both in terms of a sheer number, but also the locations of those lots as well.
Okay, good to know that you'll be tracking that data. I think it's important that we know, too, in the Land Use Department, make sure we're seeing how that progresses. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good, thank you. Other questions? We have a motion. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councillor Lindell?
Yes.
Councillor Merriworth?
Yes.
Councillor, can you speak into your mic?
That was a yes.
Okay, perfect. Councillor V. Ho Copler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Villarreal?
Yes, and I'd like to co-sponsor.
All right. Councillor Abeta?
Yes.
Councillor Cassett?
Yes.
Councillor Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
Thank you. Thank you, Eli and Noah, much appreciated.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, could you take us to our next item, please?
Yes. Yes. The next item is Item D. It is a, oh, I'm sorry, Item C. It's consideration of Resolution Number 2021. It'll be assigned a number after the meeting. It is sponsored by Counsel Rivera, Counselor Merrilworth, Counselor Vialcopter, and Counselwoman Viall. It's a resolution proclaiming severe or extreme drought conditions exist in the city of Santa Fe, imposing fire restrictions from June 10, 2021 to July 10, 2021, restricting the seller use of fireworks within the city of Santa Fe and prohibiting other fire hazard activities. Giromon Grego, our acting Fire Marshal, is available for this item.
This is also a public hearing. Good to see you, sir. We've seen you on this item before. You want to update us on anything we need to know as of tonight?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and governing body. Good evening, I'm sorry. This is in reference to the fire restrictions as they go through between June 10 and July 10. And Item D is going to be in conjunction with it from July 10 to August 10. With the exception of the Fourth of July, the chief of the department can go ahead and make the exception for the Fourth of July. And I stand for questions.
Thank you. Sponsors want to address this? I think we're pretty familiar with it at this point. Is there public testimony on this item?
Yes, Mayor. Ms. Stephanie Benanato does have her hand raised for this item. I have just asked Ms. Benanato to unmute and she is all set.
Okay, so can you hear me now? Yes?
No, you're muffled again, I'm afraid.
Okay, let me just see if I can plug my mic in and, I mean, my headset and make it a little better. Just a minute. Can you hear me better now?
A little bit.
Hello?
Yes, much pleasure. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. So I was, I'm in support of this in theory, but then I hear that you're making an exception for Fourth of July, so I'm not really sure how effective it's going to be. And I can tell you that even in this past week, I've already heard people setting off fireworks. So I do think it's important, even in theory, to say no fireworks and to be careful about fires. But with the exceptions, and again, with the difficulty of enforcement, I'm not sure how effective it really is overall. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? And I don't think anyone else is in that room unless we hear so from the clerk.
Uh, Mayor, there's, Mr. Joe Sheps is in the room. However, his audio is not connected. So I've asked him to unmute. I'm seeing if it will connect. Mr. Sheps, if you can hear us, will you please unmute your microphone?
I'm muted. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I would like to hear some kind of official response two weeks from now to my guests at the end on the Alameda. They come up to the front desk and they say, "The noise is terrible in our rooms. We couldn't use our balcony." Why doesn't the city do something about it? Ours did. I mean, East Alameda is a raceway, period, between Paseo and Delgado. It just seems you could just scoop these guys up and start finding them.
Mr. Sheps, I just want to let you know that this is actually the public hearing for the drought conditions?
So sorry. Okay, I wanted to speak later if possible. So I'm muting.
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the drought condition resolution? If not, I'll come back to the governing body.
Mayor? I'd move to approve Item 21C.
Motion to approve 21C. Is there a second?
Second.
Who was first? Counselor Vialcopter was first. Discussion of the motion, Counselwoman Viall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to clarify. By Fire Marshal Grego, you said with the exception of the Fourth of July, you're referring to the Fourth of July event?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Counsel Viall. Yes, that's what I'm referring to, the Fourth of July event. That's going to be at Santa Fe Place Mall.
Correct.
I'm sorry, I wasn't clarifying that.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. So it's not the Fourth of July holiday that anyone can be using fireworks. It's our event, the city-sponsored event. Okay, and the other thing is, I was curious if you could tell us what you all are planning to do for, in terms of outreach, to let the public know, not saying that they follow that, but when people are using fireworks in the city, especially for the Fourth of July, how do you have a plan for communicating or letting the public know of this restriction?
We discussed and are probably going to be coordinating with the public schools to use their marquee signs in reference to how to go ahead and present to the public. We're talking about displaying the information on the New Mexico Department of Transportation science for the city limits. Those are a couple of avenues, and we will use our social media accounts to present as well.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that there's widespread communication about this. And I know you all do that each year or when we have drought conditions like we do. I just want to make sure that the public knows that this is in effect until August. So the other thing I was going to ask you about was, and I just lost my train of thought. Oh, what is the public, or what should they do when there are those fireworks, the illegal fireworks that are not allowed in the city, but typically purchased in the, on pueblos or at the reservations? So what is your recommendation for people to let you all know? Or what's the best way to communicate that with you? I know you all are extremely busy during that time, but I'm just thinking about neighbors I know that are shooting off those very large professional fireworks in a residential area. So what is your advice to the public?
Mr. Mayor, Counsel Viall, my recommendation is to call the emergency line and our apparatus will get out to the area within the district. And we can also get notified via email through the Fire Marshal's office. I can give you a phone number that's not an emergency number, if you guys would like that, to go ahead and present. But typically, that's the information that we give to the public currently.
Yeah, do you have that number by chance?
I do. This is to dispatch. So let me go ahead and give you that number real quick. The non-emergency line for dispatch is 505-428-3730.
3730, okay. Thank you, Fire Marshal Grego, and I wish you all the best of luck during this difficult time. Everyone wants to shoot off the fireworks, so good luck.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Can we please call the roll on the motion?
Yes, Mayor. Counselor Merrilworth?
Yes.
All right, I can hear you now. It's very weird not seeing everyone's face. Counselor Vialcopter?
Yes.
Counselwoman Viall?
Yes.
Counselor Abeta?
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
Let's move then to Item D, please.
All right. Item D is consideration of the resolution sponsored by Counsel Rivera, Counselor Merrilworth, Counselor Vialcopter, and Counselor, Counselwoman Viall. It's a resolution proclaiming severe or extreme drought conditions exist in the city of Santa Fe, imposing fire restrictions July 11, 2021 to August 10, 2021, restricting the seller use of fireworks within the city of Santa Fe and prohibiting other fire hazard activities. As Mr. Grego noted, this resolution is for July 11 through August 10, and he is still available for this item.
Very good. Still a public hearing? I imagine that we know what it covers and what it does. Is there anyone in the waiting room to speak specifically to this item?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Second.
There's a motion from Counselor Merrilworth to approve it and from Counselwoman Viall to second it. Discussion among the governing body. Questions? Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Counselor Vialcopter?
Yes.
Right. Counselwoman Viall?
Yes.
Counselor Abeta?
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Merrilworth?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and governing body.
Thank you very much. And as Counselwoman Viall said, good luck with this season. It's very important what you're doing for us.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you. That completes the evening agenda. We did move the executive session to the end. And so we'll have to figure out how to do the technology and how to have an executive session in the council chambers beginning now. But City Attorney, it really goes to matters from the City Attorney. I'll turn it over to you.
Mayor and City Counselors, and there is one action item after the executive session as well. So we are, I'm recommending that we go into executive session to discuss threatened and pending litigation in which the city is or may become a party specifically, but not limited to the city of Albuquerque et al., the Taxation and Revenue Department, Plaza Entrahtico et al. versus Santa Fe Holdings LLC, and Cook County v. Wolf. And our action item that I would be recommending approval of relates to the Cook County v. Wolf amicus brief that I'm recommending we join.
Counselwoman Viall, do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move the governing body go into executive session to discuss the matters recommended by the City Attorney.
Your second? Counselor Merrilworth seconded, not using her microphone, however.
Second.
Thank you. Could we call the roll on the motion, please?
Yes. Counselwoman Viall?
Yes.
Counselor Abeta?
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Merrilworth?
Yes.
Counselor Vialcopter?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion has been approved to go into executive session.
Okay, we are going into executive session. We will be back for that action item and then to adjourn. Joe, is there anything we need to know about how to do this under these circumstances? All right, we are in your hands, Joe.
Yes, Mayor, I will chime in quickly. The council members who are present do not have to do anything. Joe will take this meeting off of our live channel and then we'll get you, we'll join a separate meeting for executive session. So if you're in the chambers, you can hold tight. The rest of us will hop on a different Zoom. can hold tight. The rest of us will hop on a different Zoom.
We're back in session and we are live on YouTube. So I would like to ask Councilwoman Vareal to make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the governing body return from executive session and state for the record that the matters discussed were limited to those listed on the agenda.
Is there a second? Counselor Romero worth seconded the motion.
Second.
Thank you. Could the clerk call the roll please? Do we have our clerk back? Ah, we have to go. Joe forgot to let the clerk back in. We're running a little ahead of ourselves. There's our city manager. Have we got a clerk? I think so. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sorry. I'm not sure what was going on with my account, but I'm back in.
Okay, no problem. We have a motion to come back from executive session. That was made by Councilwoman Vareal and seconded by Counselor Romero Worth, and we're ready for a vote.
All right, perfect. So, sorry, just one quick second. Motion by Councilwoman Vareal and a second by which counselor?
Romero Worth.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Sorry about that. Um. All right, Counselor Bata?
Yes.
Counselor Cassett?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell, did Counselor Lindell rejoin this meeting?
No, I don't. I think she's excused.
I think she's off for the night. Okay, perfect. Counselor Romero Worth?
Yes.
Counselor Vehil Copley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vareal?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion to come out of executive session has been approved.
And now there's a caption which you might want to read to us that's the action item coming out of the executive session and then we can address that.
Yes, that's item 15A. It is approval to join the Los Angeles County and the City of Chicago and other cities and counties in amicus brief in support of the federal government in Cook County versus Wolf, and any subsequent appeals of the case defending the federal government's abandonment of the public charge rule supporting its opposition to intervention, a coalition of states seeking to defend the public charge rule and outlining the harm that the public charge rule inflicts on local communities. Erin McSherry, our attorney, is available for this item if necessary.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have heard a motion to approve it by Councilwoman Vareal and a second from Counselor Romero Worth. Is there discussion? Could the clerk call the roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Counselor Cassett?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Romero Worth?
Yes.
Counselor Vehil Copley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vareal?
Yes.
Counselor Bata?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
Thank you. That completes the agenda for tonight's meeting. It's about 9:30 and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.